Good evening. Welcome to the December 3rd, 2020 meeting of the Southampton Town Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held via video conferencing in accordance with Governor Cuomo's Order 202.1, and until further notice, all of the board's meetings will be held remotely. So we ask the public to continually check the town's website for updates and new information. There are also options on the website for public comments and to preregister to speak on public hearings. So please consider that for all future meetings. If you wish to view tonight's live meeting only, please do not join the Zoom meeting. Please go to the town's meeting portal, choose the meeting group from the dropdown on the left, and click on the live link at the top of the page. If you wish to be heard during a meeting but did not preregister, please go to the town's meeting portal, choose the meeting group from the dropdown on the left, and you will find the information required to join the Zoom meeting. With that, I'd ask that you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to repugnance one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will be starting this meeting with the public hearings. We have applicants and members of the public standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. Charles Certain will mute the speakers until it is their time to give testimony before the board. Please be patient. If you find that you are having difficulties accessing the hearings, please visit the town clerk's meeting portal and click on the instructions link. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record, and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the board. Board members who must recuse themselves from any application will state so on the record and will be removed from the meeting until the end of the hearing. Unless otherwise stated at the end of each hearing, all of these applications will remain open for written comments for all purposes until January 4th, 2021. Those comments can be addressed to the Board Secretary Candace and sent via email, mail, and/or dropped off at Town Hall. Additionally, in accordance with Governor Cuomo's order, these hearings will be recorded and will be posted on the town's website. Before we start the meeting, I'd like to introduce Tara Cody, G.I.S. Supervisor, who is going to introduce a new service offered for the residents.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to speak tonight. Can everyone hear me clearly?
We can.
Okay. So I just wanted to update the board on something that we have recently--
I can't understand you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I wanted to just update the board on something we have recently implemented within Town Hall. We have had some feedback from members of the public, specifically professional members of the public who have been joining your Zoom meetings and would like to have a way to speak with the inspector of the day via Zoom. So what we have done is we've implemented a software called Waitwhile. So Waitwhile is a waitlisting software. I don't know if any of you have visited any doctor's offices lately where you have to join a waitlist and also provide an online attestation regarding COVID status to that doctor's office, but we've implemented that as well. So now we have a digital attestation form that anyone entering Town Hall will have to submit before they're allowed to be seen. But the Waitwhile software will also allow individuals to be able to schedule a booking with the inspector of the day. I don't know if you all know this, but every week there is a different inspector of the day on call within Town Hall. So they don't go out into the field. They are specifically asked to stay in the office to answer questions at the counter. We now have the ability for the public to create a Zoom meeting with that inspector of the day. That website is available on the town's website. And if you don't mind, I'd just like to show you quickly what that would look like. Want to share my screen? This is the waitlist. So our waitlist is currently closed because Town Hall is closed. But if somebody wanted to schedule a booking with the inspector of the day, they would choose the building department. They would choose their time and their date. We're just gonna pick a date. I'll go in and cancel that later. What happens is that an automatic Zoom meeting is created and sent to the inspector of the day as well as sent to the constituent that created the meeting. So if you can see here, the inspector of the day sees this, the Zoom meeting link. This is the constituents' information. So the inspector has the ability to chat with that individual through SMS or contact that individual through phone or email. You can do this at home. You can do this in your car. You can do it wherever you have access to create a Zoom meeting. And we really were asked to do this and have this released by January 1, but because of the way that things have been going with COVID, we were told that we no longer had that leisure to do that. So that's why we released it so quickly. We actually have a kiosk within Town Hall where people can sign up, and we are also going to have an additional iPad for people to complete the attestation at Town Hall as well. Any questions?
That's great. Very nice for members of the public to be able to do this.
Yeah, we've had some positive feedback, especially for people like on a day like today where there's an hour wait down in the building department. And if you have a five-minute question and you know that, hey, I need something answered about, you know, this fence height, you can create a Zoom meeting and you don't have to come all the way down to Town Hall, wait on a line for an hour, and have only a five-minute question.
Awesome. Great.
Okay. So we are going to be releasing some PSAs to the public as well because, again, my apologies, we did have to rush on this. So we did not have everything together all at once, even the peripherals. It was a wait time on getting the kiosk because now everybody needs a kiosk with a sanitation station and everything else like that. So do apologize that it's not all together, but the software is working and it's being implemented in the building apartment now.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, does anyone have any other questions, Tara, and this new system? Okay, if not, Tara, thank you so much. I greatly appreciate you doing this tonight and providing this information to us and people who are going to be, well, in communication with the building department in the months ahead.
All right, well, thank you, Board, again for having me, and good night.
Thanks, Tara.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay, next one to make a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
Motion.
We have a second.
Second, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair both aye. And next to the Termites.
All right, we'll go to the agenda. Let's go to the decision calendar. We have Lisa Pirrellini. I'm gonna move that we open up, reopen this, okay, so we can accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair both aye, reopen.
Okay, now I'll move to close it and with a determination this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Ms. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Chair both aye.
Okay, and then I'm gonna move, I'm gonna adjourn a few decisions to our 1217 meeting. That would be Mohammed Sindu, Moonlight LLC, Almonds LLC, and Heidi R. Joe and Glenn Steiglman.
Second.
Hold on, excuse me a second. Mr. Secretary, would you please add Camille Considine, Keith Considine, and Clifford Considine to that list? Just number two on decisions.
By all means. I'll move that we adjourn Camille and Keith, nice name, huh, and Clifford to our 1217 meeting.
Okay, and that's in addition to the others that Keith just mentioned. So it's one motion for all. Do we have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed.
And then we're gonna do John and I'm gonna adjourn John and Audrey Newland House to our January 7th meeting, 2021.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed.
And then I will make a motion to adjourn KTB Flying Point Revocable Trust to our June 3rd meeting, 2021.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed.
And then we will move to reopen Joseph M. Citron for the purpose of getting a written submission.
Second.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair both aye, reopen.
And now we took the written submission in. I'm gonna close it for a determination later this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed.
And then I have Edward Zuplinsky. I'll move to reopen that to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
I'm recused on this application, but for the purpose of opening it for written submissions, I'll vote aye for that, so we're, yeah, reopen.
Okay, I'll make a motion to close it for a determination later this evening.
Second.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
And I'm recused, so I abstain.
Anybody have anything else? All right, go take it. Then we're gonna go to item one on the agenda, which is 65 Cliff Drive LLC in Noyak. 25 Cliff Drive, self-encumbered tax map 900-9-1-18.1. Applicant request for leave from following provisions of the Town Code, one, to the proposed dwelling. Sorry?
That's Bruce. Bruce, turn your microphone off.
Please.
Hi, Keith.
Thank you. Tell Bruce to be quiet, will you? One, 330-84D Pyramid Height for Encroachment in the amount of 1,951.05 cubic feet. 1,951 cubic feet north side and 0.05 cubic feet on the east side. Two, 330-11 Residential Districts Table of Dimensional Regulations for a proposed third story. For the proposed detached garage, 330-84D Pyramid Height for Encroachment in the amount of 67 cubic feet south side. And 330-76D Placement of Accessory Building Structures and Uses in All Districts. And 330-82C Yards to allow the detached garage to be located within the total side yard of the principal dwelling. Three foot of a swimming pool on the construction. 330-76D Placement of Accessory Building Structures and Uses in All Districts. And 330-83C Yards to allow the swimming pool to be located within the total side yard of the principal dwelling and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction. We're looking for Bruce Anderson to represent the applicant.
Yep. Good evening, Bruce, just had to swear you in. You can state your name and address for the record, please.
Bruce Anderson, Suffolk Environmental Consulting Offices, Main Street, Bridgehampton.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and tell us about the application.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is an application for 65 Cliff Drive LLC. This is a waterfront property containing 19,226 square feet and has an existing building coverage of 1637 square feet. In this application, the applicant proposes to demolish an existing 1,594-- I'm sorry, 16-- 1994 dwelling with a 268-square-foot deck and construct a two-story dwelling with a footprint of 1,887 square feet. A 16 by 20, which is a 320-square-foot garage, detached garage, and has constructed a 14 by 27-foot, which is 378-square-foot swimming pool pursuant to a town wetland permit and a building permit and a town building permit. The proposed dwelling would maintain the same setback from Cliff Drive as existing and also maintain the same norally side yard setback at 13.1 feet. The proposed building coverage equals 2,206 square feet, and the allowable building coverage is 20% of lot area or 3,845 square feet. The proposed garage at 16 by 20 is set back from the road by 16 feet. Based upon the rule of continuance, the rear yard area is 2,470 square feet, and the proposed garage would occupy 139.2 feet within that area or 5.6% of the required rear yard where 20% is permitted. For the proposed dwelling, we're requesting pyramid relief found at 330-84D for a new two-story dwelling that would consist of 1,951 cubic feet on the north side and 0.5 feet on the east side facing the street. There is reference to the, in the notice, to a third story. I request the board take notice that the building plans feature a mezzanine consisting of 346 square feet and that the floor area below the mezzanine consists of 1,717 square feet. And so the mezzanine occupies 20% of the underlying floor area, which is less than the 33.3% or one-third permitted by code. For the proposed garage, there's pyramid relief requested in the amount of 67 cubic feet. And for the garage and the pool that's already been built, there's basically two forms of relief. One is that 330-76D, which speaks to private garages not being placed within a required side, total side yard. And then also 330-82C, which would allow the detached garage and the swimming pool located within a total side yard. This parcel is part of a waterfront community known as Bay Point, which contains 238 lots, most of which are 10,000 square feet or less in the area. Because Bay Point is zone R10, having individual side yard setbacks at 10 feet with a total side yard at 25 feet, the majority of the developed lots, particularly two-story houses, will exhibit noncompliance with respect to the pyramid law, which was adopted, as you know, in 1982. These lots will be pre-existing non-conforming, that they were, the two-story houses constructed prior to the enactment of the pyramid law or they benefit from zoning variance. We provided this board with a zoning analysis that identifies the adjacent parcels, the waterfront parcels, that benefit from zoning relief and pyramid law. Among the waterfront lots receiving zoning relief for pyramid, the range runs from 5,298 cubic feet to 339 cubic feet. More recently, the board approved a pyramid variance in this neighborhood at 3,086 cubic feet, and that would be for 81 Arbor Drive in Bay Point. In this application, we're requesting relief for the dwelling at 1,951 cubic feet, which places us squarely within the range of relief granted in this area. And the relief for the garage at 67 cubic feet is minor in nature. The proposed dwelling maintains the same rear yard setback as the existing dwelling and complies with all other dimensional requirements in this R10 zone. The proposed garage and existing pool are located 10 feet from the southerly lot line where 8 feet is permitted. The garage is set back from the road by double, by double the minimum rear yard setback, which totals 16 feet. Total side yard equals 23.1 feet where 25 feet is required. However, the zoning law at 330-83K provides for the halving of that requirement. So when that zoning 83K is applied to total side yard, total side yard would be calculated at half of 25 or 12.5 feet. In terms of regulatory compliance, this project benefits from a wetland permit issued by the Conservation Board. Subject property already benefits from a letter of non-jurisdiction granted by New York State D.C. The property falls within the town's high priority area pursuant to its CPF Water Quality Improvement Plan, and the applicant proposed to install an IA OUTS alternative septic system that complies with the town regulations at 123-52. Likewise, the proposed project would comply with the town stormwater management regulations. And finally, the development proposed in this application is located outside of the FEMA floodplain. We submit that we satisfy the variance criteria in that the grant of variance will not cause undesirable change in the neighborhood as the property dwelling is consistent with newer similar dwellings in the neighborhood. The board should take notice that the survey depicts the locations of dwellings on either side of the property. The dwellings appear to be set back from the road by a similar distance, and the pool for the adjacent lot to the south is likewise set back 10 feet from the side lot line as is for this property. The proposed dwelling complies with all dimensional setback requirements. In addition to the noncompliance requested in this application, it's not atypical for noncompliance exhibited in this neighborhood. The proposed garage at 16 feet by 20 feet is of reasonable size and set back from the side lot line by 10 feet where 8 feet is required and lines up with the existing pool, I'm sorry, and lines up-- that and its pool lines up with the existing pool-- lines up with the existing quarters, which received a building permit and a Conservation Board permit. Those permits were issued approximately a year ago. There are obviously numerous detached garages, and there were swimming pools throughout the neighborhood. We submit the benefits cannot, saw, cannot be feasibly achieved without a variance because a lot is burdened by wetlands. It requires that we move the development as far away from the wetlands as possible, and this application accomplishes that objective. We say that variance is not substantial in relationship given other period variances granted in the area and the general pyramid nonconforming that exists throughout the neighborhood. We submit that the granting of the variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood because the proposed dwelling complies with respect to all zoning setback restrictions, all environmental restrictions, all FEMA restrictions, and the overall property, project benefits from a wetland permit granted by the Conservation Board, and the project features the installation of the IA OUTS system and also incorporates drainage controls for stormwater runoff. In sum, the benefit to the applicant is the requested determination is granted outweighs any detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community. The benefit to the applicant is simply the ability to construct and redevelop this property as proposed, and we submit there is no detriment to the neighborhood or community. Now, I understand that Catherine Fee, who's our project architect, is available for questions relating to the specific design of parameters to this house. What I can tell you in discussions with her earlier today is that I requested is that the board might ask for the ceiling heights that trigger this pyramid relief. And so be advised that the ceiling height on the first floor is 9 feet and the ceiling height on the second floor is 8 feet. And that concludes my opening statement. I'm obviously here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, well, I mean, I know we have people in-- who are waiting. And so, you know, I think I certainly want to hear what the public comments are. Also, I don't know if we can share the screen of the survey, but if Bruce, you could do that, or Candace could do that, because maybe that might be helpful. I'm not sure.
Yeah, while Candace is doing that, I think we need a little more testimony on the story as, I mean, on the third story as well. Because I don't, I don't think, I kind of was trying to follow what you were saying, Bruce, but I don't think you're allowed to have two stories and then a mezzanine. If that's what you're arguing.
Yes, you could have two stories and a mezzanine. That's what the code says.
Well, but is that the reason that that is advertised as relief for a third story?
I think it was advertised in error. That's my feeling.
But when-- When an attic space has habitable space, it's considered a story. So how is this not an attic with habitable space versus a mezzanine?
Because we have no attic. We did a similar thing at the edge of Edgemere Road, if you recall. It's the same similar design, but I can, if Catherine's there, maybe she can walk you through the design of this.
Okay, is this mezzanine any habitable living space? Is that-- All right.
Yes, it is. The mezzanine is habitable. The difference is that in a mezzanine, if you're gonna have one, it requires you to install sprinklers.
Well, I'm aware of that. Okay. However, our board generally rarely grants applications for three-story dwellings, and most of the circumstances in which we do grant that relief is when you have one story that is not a, not habitable living--
It is habitable.
Right, which is typically the case when we have, you know, a FEMA compliant property that uses the lowest level as a garage but not living space because of flooding. But they need to raise it and they need the additional space. So am I understanding that you have three habitable space stories almost being proposed?
Well, we submitted a draw your attention to four plans submitted by the architect, and they depict the mezzanine, and I again say, there is no attic. So it's not like there's an attic in a mezzanine. There's a first floor, a second floor, and a mezzanine above the first floor, which appears to comply with the code. You could have an attic, for sure.
Well, have these plans changed? Well, have these plans changed since the building department wrote this up? Because they wrote it up for three stories. So that's my question.
That's a question for the building department.
Have you given them? Given them revised plans?
Uh, they were filed November fourth with the building department.
Okay.
So your revised plans may, may change.
Well, I, I think, I, I don't think we need relief for it, but, uh, you know, maybe that's an issue for further discussion, but. My understanding is we do not need relief for that. I'm just applying the code and I'm looking at the building plans.
Okay, but the primary relief that you need is pyramid relief. And that is called a pyramid relief may be due to the mezzanine. Just a hunch.
No, the, uh, the mezzanine is located in the center portion of the building.
Okay, so it's, it's, yeah, I mean, most of the relief is done on the north side, almost all of it.
That's correct.
Well, if they get the first floor ceilings down to eight foot, would that save us, uh, something there?
It certainly would.
Read my mind, Keith.
Well, then, uh, Mr. Anderson needs to give that some good thought.
So what's the purpose of the mezzanine other than aesthetic? Like what, what kind of? Um, habitable space are we talking about?
Well, the mezzanine is essentially, uh, access, there's mechanicals up there. And there's access to roof deck. That's what the floor plans show. It, it's basically a stairwell.
I thought your survey showed mechanicals underneath on the first floor.
I'm looking at the.
The survey.
Level at eight, one oh four. They're filed with your thing. So you have, uh, uh, it's open below. You come up a set of stairs. There's. And there's a mechanical, like air conditioning units and things like that.
Listen, the survey says that all the pool equipment and everything else is under the first floor. Put the survey up. Take a look at it. Maybe I'm incorrect.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not arguing with that, Keith. What I'm saying is these are mechanicals that pertain to the house. Not the pool.
Okay, well, we're gonna, you know.
Actually, you know. Really, all it is is a stairway. I mean, it's a stairway to access a mechanical area. And a deck area, a roof deck, which is primitive.
Well, you know, J- uh, Jason had asked about what, what was going to be in the mezzanine area. It looks to me like maybe an area where, uh, for purposes of views. And I don't know whether there's going to be bedrooms there or, or what, what the.
There are no bedrooms.
We can condition that. We can condition. You can't have any living space in there. The hell with that. No bathroom, no, no bedrooms, no nothing.
There, there is none of that in this space.
Well, we'll just put in the conditions in the decision. That way we got nothing to worry about, you know?
But, but just so I understand, Bruce, do we have revised, revised architectural plans since September sixteenth?
Yes, we, we.
Okay.
We, we met with the building department. We filed these on November fourth and the. Uh, architect met and, uh, a member by staff met with the building department to go over this, these plans. They are in your file.
Okay. So maybe something's changed with the building department.
I think it was probably, you know, it's like, that's my belief.
No, we'll find out, you know, where kind of where they are. We'll review the revised plans if they haven't already give, uh, feedback. In terms of the relief, Bruce, is the relief going to change from the revised plans? Other than the third story?
No.
Okay.
You know, there's a, it nips a tiny, looks like it nips a portion of the, uh, roof. Um, on that side and, and probably we could make an adjustment there, but that's something that I'd have to take up with the applicant and the. Architect. The architect did mention that, um. Um, they could make it smaller if they had to. That is the mezzanine. We've been reluctant. I mean, a nine foot ceiling is not unusual. I'm sitting in a room now at nine foot ceilings and it's not a lot. And of course you have eight foot ceilings on the second floor. At least at, at the plate height there. So I don't think, you know, we, we will certainly look into that.
Yeah, well, Keith, well, Keith suggested eight foot ceilings on the first floor. I'm, I'm with Keith on that. So, you know, I think you, you got two votes and my guess is you might have four. That is that want eight foot ceilings on that floor to reduce the pyramid.
Yeah, I'm the third vote on that.
Okay. Are there any other, are there more questions of, of Bruce? Okay, if not, I know there are people who are waiting to be heard. Who would like to go first? Um. I don't know, uh, Tiffany and, and, and you both, both raised their hands. Who would like to go first between the two of you?
I didn't see the other person.
Okay.
How, how are you?
Uh, doing very well, Tiffany. Just have to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
Okay.
You state your name and address, please.
Tiffany Gavin, fifty three Cliff Drive, Sag Harbor, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
I do.
So, uh, you can tell us your thoughts on this application, please.
Uh, my neighbors and I are here. We just like to see the neighborhood analysis that really does support the additional cubic feet. That's being proposed for the home and garage because it's not a clip of a corner. It's quite a lot. And the proof of exception why this property is residential would be able to exceed the pyramid, pyramid sky plane. I have found no exception that would exceed the maximum under sub, subsection A. And the overall height of the principal structure. It must be a minimum overall height. Residential, residential additions of a principal structure are not improvements that are applicable. To this provision, even with the A E and V E flood zone. So we would like to see also a survey determining amount of disturbance of natural vegetation. But based on current total lot size, the proposed plot plan that we have access to at this point. Is nineteen thousand two hundred and twenty six square feet. This property has eroded. And continues to erode significantly on the, from the water side since October twenty fourth, two thousand and nineteen. A new land survey should be required. It also bears noting that I have no problem with a house that meets conformity. That not objecting a conforming property. I think improvement to an area is appreciated and valued. It bears noting that this applicant has already been granted relief for lesser wetland building setbacks and trade for removing a functional bulkhead on the property. They did so on October twenty fourth without any permits. From the trustees, D O C, Army Corps. Um, or the D E C. It's created a nuisance. Adversely impacted the environment, resulted in a violation from the town trustees. It also spurred two additional violation inquiries from the U S Army Corps of Engineers and the D E C. Where here, my neighbors and I. We would like to be assured as a community that the applicant has provided evidence as to why they have satisfied each of the requested area standards. And provide supporting evidence to prove that no negative impact should come from these reliefs that they're asking for. I'm respectfully asking board. To visit this site and carefully review the new application to determine if any further negative environmental impacts. May result from their plans and construction and add to the current problem we have been forced to deal with. We didn't have the opportunity get, to get in front of this problem before they. Removed that bulkhead ensuing in a landslide that has blocked low tide water flow that we have had for. Seventy plus years at this mouth of the canal. We could old, we can't even navigate a boat out of it anymore. So with regard to the garage, there are only two garages that are detached in that neighborhood. One is conforming and one is grandfathered in. None are asking for variances. If, none of them, either of them have a deck on top either. So you feel allowing certain things like this to occur will set a precedent to other homeowners on small, small parcels of land. To build in front of their homes, what has been rejected in the back of their homes. It will completely alter the environment. It's completely out of character to the neighborhood. And I disagree with the attorney when he says it's not, it's not minor in nature. These are very big impacts to this neighborhood, what this applicant is asking for. So. A garage at eighteen feet high, sixteen feet setback off the land. The lot is point four four of an acre. Half of it is in wetlands and it's not buildable. So we're talking about this three story, it's three stories, no question, it's three stories. It's almost, what was it, four thousand square feet, almost five thousand square feet? A detached garage and a pool on point two two of an acre. We just want it to be in compliance and fitting the neighborhood. Bay Point doesn't have big plots of land. We have these small. Nature, beautiful, beautiful light coming in. We have this monster come up with this ginormous, everything on the front end of the property. So I would, would like to also. Understand something that when. These things are happening and there's no impunity. There's no impetus to correct problems that they've already been, they've asked relief. They were granted relief. They destroyed an environment. Now here they are, these two gentlemen pleading a case. To say we want more relief, but it's really not that much. It may not be that much. Just prove to us that it's not that much. Prove to us that you're not going to further dump on our homes. This is a flip property. For this applicant, so it's not. Not so heart stringing to say, well, I really want that and I'll trade whatever it is because at the end of the day. The bottom line is there, it's a profit to them. So they're not going to have the same care that our neighbors are going to have in decision making. They're going, it's a business. They, Marty Shay gave two options. If you want the lesser setback like you're asking in the application, I know permit. We'll give that to you, but just remove the bulkhead. She said, fine. Landslide. She got her pool. So we're, we're left with. One disaster from her relief. Now we're asking for three more reliefs. Are we going to get three more disasters that we're going to be left with? There should be some provable surveys that are, that should happen. To say that there's not going to be any negative impacts further on the environment.
Tiffany, I have a question. Are you on the south of the, are you an adjacent property owner? Are you next door?
Um, two, uh, three houses away.
Three houses away. Okay, we have someone who's great, uh, uh, wants to be next door. He's, uh, great, uh.
Wait, who was next? Fifty, oh, Anne.
Can I ask you, Tiffany, uh, you said you and your neighbors that you, that you are representing in some way. Uh, what, what are their addresses?
Um, sixty one is on here.
Wait a minute. Cliff Drive.
It, that's Van and Ali Brody.
Yeah, and what other?
I can't see who else is on here. If any of the neighbors are on here, if they could just make themselves known, that would be easier.
They'll all have, they'll all have a turn to speak.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I don't have that view for some reason. I just see the lady.
No, we don't see everybody on.
Yeah, okay, sorry. So thank you for listening to me and I, we're, we're basically asking you to adjourn this until. All of these details are worked out. We really don't know. We've foiled the property for more information. We're actually looking at. The nine sixteen drawings and it sounds like there's drawings that came after that. We did foil the property for this information. But due to COVID, there's been some delay in us actually getting that information. So. Being that history told us how they do business, we really need to understand exactly what's being done. And concrete. So we feel comfortable knowing that we don't have to brace ourselves for the impact of another. Environmental disaster, changing the overall character of our neighborhood and basically taking the charm away. With their designs.
Okay, all right. Any, uh, any other questions, uh, of Tiffany? If not, Tiffany, thank you for your comments. I actually would like to go next to the adjacent property owner. Who, uh, raised, uh, her hand. Um, and then, and then we'll get to the rest of you, I promise. So I believe it's, uh, the Brody, the Brodys.
Brodys, yes.
Hello, good evening. Your attorneys, I, I just have to swear you in, so you can state your names and addresses for the record, please.
Arlen Brody.
Dan Brody.
Sixty one Cliff Drive.
Sixty one Cliff Drive.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth or nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're adjacent property owners. Are you on the, I believe it's the south or the north?
We're in the north.
We're on the north.
The north, okay, so it's, so it's the pyramid relief, I believe that's going to be impacting you.
Well, it's not just the pyramid relief. It's what they've already done to get that pyramid relief. Um, in terms of, we, we live on a canal, uh, owned by the trustees. And, uh, this company had a functioning bulkhead. Took it down and now we barely have any canal whatsoever. We cannot. Sand on our lot, sand next door at sixty nine Cliff Drive. His dock is no longer usable on one side. There's been no remediation and we feel that the size of the lot has changed due to this. Uh, this problem with, um, all of the sand going into the canal. They've not only impacted, um, myself and sixty nine Cliff Drive, but every single home on the canal. It's now, um, freshwater, uh, fresh mussels and oyster beds have been destroyed. There's been no, um, no desire to, to, to remediate. And according to the zoning that we're all now studying. Um, waterfront lots. That supposed to, the condition may and does apply for some dug canals. Where the rear or the waterfront lot line is a common line to the, to across the canal. There's no more common line. So the survey has changed dramatically. So we don't believe that the survey that they proposed. Is a true survey of what the land is now since this, uh, bulkhead has been removed. And it was, uh, Shinnecock Shores subdivision is, is quoted in the, in your, um. Your zoning, uh, point about it. And it also states that in a waterfront lot, there's no accessory buildings. So we don't understand how they could possibly even ask for this garage. It should be part of the house. It should be like.
I, I, I don't know that there's anything in the code that says that waterfront lots aren't allowed to have accessory buildings. If you have somewhere in the code that says that, I would be fascinated to hear.
The wetland setback reduction paragraph.
Of what?
Of your. Residential zoning overview booklet.
Okay, well, that's not the code.
What, what's that, what section of the code does it refer to?
They don't say a specific code number, but it does say. Oh, three.
Thirty is the section in the code.
Three thirty, sorry, three thirty dash eighty three K.
Yes, I think, I think that section talks about you, that if you are, have wetlands on your property, you get to reduce your setbacks. For your principal structure, not for your accessory. I don't think it says no accessory structures are allowed.
It definitely doesn't say that.
Not granted to accessory structures. Well, say it again. I'm just, okay, but as a neighbor and as a homeowner for thirty one years here. This has been a, a, a incredibly horrible, uh, decision in removing this bulkhead. That's caused all this problems with all the neighborhood. Um, my husband is an architect. He will talk to the square footage that they're asking. And how it will impact our light on our side of, of the house. And go, go through this square footage. And the mezzanine is on the second floor and it.
On the third floor. It's on.
Tiffany, Tiffany, we can only have one speaker at a time.
Sorry.
Sorry. Sorry. Can you just mute? Yeah, Tiffany, can you please mute yourself?
I don't have the mute button, I tried to.
There you go, you're muted.
Okay, so I, I looked over this thing briefly, well, not all that briefly, but, um, if you consider, okay, the floor area of the garage, the floor area of the pool, the floor area, nobody's mentioned the deck that wraps around the pool. And your definition of a deck being square footage, if it's over twelve inches off the ground, plus the other little projections that stick out here and there, they're over by one thousand five hundred and sixty-six point four square feet, give or take. Um, the, the, so there's too many buildings on the lot. The, the north side where our sky exposure plane is encroached by the, by their building does take away some light and some air. The way they're building is they could easily put that cubage on the other side, on the south side, and not destroy any kind of zoning issues. The, uh, the, the side yards, uh, okay, I'm back to the deck and there's a, and it is three stories instead of two. The big thing that bothers me is how can they build so much? Because they have, the, the, the survey that they have now shows no retaining wall. So, uh, their land area should be, my understanding, is based on high tide, which would, uh, shrink the amount of, uh, construction that you could do. So I'd like to know really what's going on. There's a lot of murders here, plus, um, the garage is going to be an encroachment in the, in the neighborhood. I mean, it's going to change, it's going to change the feeling of the neighborhood and so on. The pool is built four and a half feet higher than the ground. Why don't they seek it in the ground? So if they do get it, it's not going to be a visible obstruction. And, uh, the, the deck being what they propose now, they could put the garage underneath it. Because, um, it's a, it's a walkout on the first floor. And if you know Cliff Drive, they call it Cliff Drive for a reason because it's, it's quite a slope down. We had to go through filing and so on and so forth. And we got some, uh, uh, we got some, what do you call it, uh, from the zoning guy, uh, no.
We, wetlands.
From wetlands, they, you know, we had to set back, we had to do certain things. I don't see much of that here. And, and just so you know, we did ask him if we could remove our bulkhead and he told us no. And I'm not interested in doing it. So I'm just giving you, and we got our permit, I think, in oh eight.
Well, I know you had comments about, um, you know, both you mentioning about the bulkhead and the impact of that. Those are concerns, okay? I, you know, I'm concerned about it, but, but it's really not something that this, this, before this board. There are other regulatory bodies that deal with kinds of issues that you're talking about. We can certainly ask Bruce about it, but just so you understand, the only things that we can address are the variance relief from the code, uh, that's related to this application. So unfortunately, the issue of the bulkhead is not something we can do anything about.
May I just ask a question, please? Okay. But if the size of the lot has changed as a result of now, of high watermark now, as a result of this bulkhead being taken down and whatever damage it has caused, which is enormous, all these plans and the survey may be a moot point. It may not be the actual, what is there now as a result of having taken this bulkhead down?
Yeah, I can certainly ask, ask the agent for the applicant about that. We, we have a survey submitted to us by a surveyor who's licensed and, you know, signed the document and submitted it to us. But if there's an error in it, I would want to correct it.
Well, the original survey that they did the plans from shows the bulkhead. That's what we, Van and I have been working our numbers off of. Now, all of a sudden, there's another survey without the bulkhead that just appeared.
That's the one you have.
That's the one you have. So I, I think there are little fishy things going on around here.
And even as it stands, they're still over by almost sixteen hundred square feet.
So you'd like us to deny the application?
Yes, until we resolve some stuff.
Yes, we have to resolve this, yes, absolutely.
Okay.
The neighborhood would.
The neigh, uh, we're speaking for all my neighbors.
I understand, and you've heard members of this board being concerned about the application already before we had any testimony from, uh, from neighbors. So, so that, so that certainly is going to, you know, change the application somewhat. But it sounds to me like you just like us to deny it. I guess my other question for you is, especially as an adjacent property owner, whether you would be willing to have any discussions with Mr. Anderson and his client about your concerns to see if maybe, uh, you know, a dialogue could happen that might be able to help alleviate some of your concerns, absent us doing a flat, you know, a straight denial.
We are working with the trustees.
We'll, we'll talk with them.
We'll talk and we'll talk with them, absolutely, we're very willing.
Trustees, I'm talking about, talking, talking to the agent for the application, Mr. Anderson, or, or the, you know, the owner.
Well.
Will you be willing to do that?
Trying, we have been trying, hasn't been successful yet.
I, I understand, but I'm, I'm asking about it because I often do. I, I, I don't ever like to see neighbors, you know, really unhappy with each other. It's not a good thing.
Well, so they're not really neighbors because it's a.
It's an investment.
Yeah, they're just going to turn it over so they want to put the most stuff in there that they can, rather than complying with our wishes or the zoning or whatever. Because when, when they close with the buyer, they're gone.
They're gone, they couldn't care less.
Okay, so it sounds to me like you don't want to have a conversation.
No, we will, because maybe we can remediate some stuff and, and.
That's all I'm suggesting, is, is that, whether you're, you know, and asking whether you're open to have a dialogue, that's all.
We're angry but open minded.
Okay, okay.
This, uh, just a comment here, this survey that we're looking at appears to have been originally done on April fourth of two thousand and eighteen. And there's been several, uh, revisions to it, um, over the last few years. But are you saying that the land that's reflected on the survey is not currently what the, the actual land is?
We're questioning it, yes.
You know, it's interesting, since they tore the retaining wall out, there's a tag here that indicates where the wetlands are. My, my guess, somewhere between a guess and a question, is since they tore that out, the wetlands numbers or the wetlands marks probably have changed. Because tons and tons of sand have cascaded into the canal and into the bay and up the canal, down the canal, and, um, I.
In two and a half, basically less than three years, you believe the size of the lot has significantly changed?
I, I think that, um, someone who knows wetlands and stuff like that would need to ratify it because I believe it's changed. Because I've walked there back and forth, I've pushed boats through it, I've, you know, it's, it's one of my favorite places being next door. And I see, uh, all I see is sand. And before, you know, there was a, there was a retaining wall, sand, little teeny plants and stuff like that. And, um, I, I have trouble walking and I used to use the retaining wall to help me walk out to the bay. So, uh, I do notice a huge change.
Well, wetlands permit has been issued for the property. They have a valid wetlands permit that doesn't expire until February twenty twenty-three. So somebody who is familiar with wetlands has been out there.
When?
At, at the very least, when he issued the permit in March of twenty twenty.
No, uh, okay.
So I, I don't believe, but okay.
I, I would like just to, um, weigh in here. Since we, we've been going for almost an hour on the application, it seems like there needs to be a lot of work done based on comments from the board. So it seems, Mr. Anderson, that you have your work cut out for you to speak to the neighbors and work on some revisions. My comments would be that it seems if you move the structures away from the property lines and you adjust the ceiling heights, you could eliminate the need for any pyramid here as a, as a potential. And also this, this third floor, uh, I think is in question in my mind. Just also based on comments I've heard from fellow board members. So, um, I know we've heard from some of the neighbors, we have other people here. But it, it seems like, in my mind, the applicant is going to be coming back with revisions. So I think we should do that sooner than later. It's not going to be resolved this evening, based on my perspective, but I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
I agree. It's not.
May I also, we have another environmentalist here, uh, Gina would like to speak. She also has.
Yes, she's going to be next, she's going to be next.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, no problem, appreciate your comments. Okay, Gina?
Thank you, hi.
Hi. Brianne, if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Gina Rigdon, DKR Shores, two thirty-five Trout Brook Lane, Riverhead, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Most definitely.
So if you now tell us your thoughts on the application, please.
No, I don't want to tell you my thoughts on the application. I want to tell you, um, I want to make comments about policy and procedure.
Okay, good.
Holding a violation from Southampton Town Trustees referencing, um, numerous articles in Southampton Town Code. I know that Marty Shay conditioned a wetlands approval, um, based on the removal of a bulkhead. Basically, and I, I'm looking at a state plan that was approved with a swimming pool at sixty feet from a wetland boundary, which is really unheard of. I'm seeing a very overdeveloped lot. I think nineteen hundred cubic foot is extraordinarily relieved for a pyramid. Um, I see a third floor that is completely not allowed in Southampton Town Code or residential table of dimensions. I'm seeing a lot of procedures that were violated during this process. Basically, they wanted a swimming pool and a huge house and they sold their soul to the devil to get it. In order to get it, they removed the bulkhead expressly against Southampton Town Code. Um, also, under the conditions of the Conservation Board permit, general conditions page five, page five oh five, the permit shall not be construed as conveying to the applicant any other right to trespass or lands or interfere with the riparian rights of others to perform permitted work, et cetera, et cetera. Those riparian interests were very much interfered with when they closed off the manmade canal and interfered with not, how many people, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six houses? And their ability to access the waterway. They interfered with Southampton Town underwater, underwater lands. And I've been in contact with not just Southampton Town Trustees, Eric Schultz, president, all of the trustees. I've been in contact with the DEC, um, I've been in contact with Andrew Walker. I'm also the analyst that, um, issued this permit for the upland construction, which by the way, is over twenty-five, twenty percent of the upland area. If you notice the land area nineteen plus or so thousand square feet, when you calculate upland lot coverage for the DEC, you're not supposed to include the wetland area. What you're seeing is twenty percent of the entire total lot.
Okay, that's how it's calculated under the town code.
This is. I under, I understand, but Katie, on special condition number seven, when the, when the permit accepted the conditions of this permit, they basically broke the law. The permit is responsible for obtaining any other permits, approvals, lands, easements or rates of way that may be required for the project. They did not. Marty Shay had no authorization to remove a bulkhead. You could, in chapter three twenty-five, if you just E-code and put in the word bulkhead, the only agency that comes up is the Southampton Town Trustees. There is no word bulkhead in chapter three twenty-five at all.
This issue is not before the zoning board of appeals, whether or not they. People do things beyond permits all the time.
I don't think the zoning board is able to, and please, please Katie, correct me if I'm wrong, because I know the building department isn't able to, under the, under chapter three thirty-one seventy-four, building permits. I don't think they're allowed to issue any other permits while there is non-compliance issues and or violations in effect. So I would urge the zoning board to not, uh, to pull this over until this is.
I, I think, I think that's abundantly clear that they are coming back. So I don't think we need any more testimony, in my opinion, as to that. They're coming back and no decision is being made this evening, so. And I would like to just remind everybody that we do have a two-minute, uh, public speaking aside from the applicant, just to move things along.
I'm done.
You can submit anything in writing, but.
If you could insist on having appropriate DEC permits, conservation.
We, we can only deal what's in terms of zoning, we, we are not the permitting authority, so.
I know, in zoning, they're responsible for getting all these other permits.
Yeah, and our decisions are conditioned upon that.
Part of building, so we can only deal with the zoning issues before us.
Okay, I, I will talk to building too, but I just wanted to say, make you aware of what's going on, I'm fighting.
No problem. And Gina, also so you know, you know, sometimes people end up being cited and end up in justice court in Southampton.
And that's going to happen too.
That is, you know, justice court pulls them off until they, they go, go through the, your board to deal with.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Osman, thank you, sir.
No problem.
I'll mute myself.
All right, uh, so, um, any other questions of, of Gina? Okay, if not, I believe, uh, Mr. Wayne, you were waiting to be heard in connection with this application? Just need you to unmute.
No, mine is with the concern to application number five.
Okay, I thought you were waiting on this application.
No, no.
Is there anyone else who's waiting to be heard, uh, this evening in connection with the application of, uh, this is sixty-five Cliff Drive LLC for sixty-five Cliff Drive in Noia. Any hands, if you, you would like to be heard, this will be the time to let us know.
I see none.
None, okay, all right. I'll give you an opportunity to respond and then we're going to put this over.
Well, we could certainly speak with our clients. I will say, uh, this business about other permits is, um, as I said previously, we do have a permit from the Conservation Board, in fact, two of them. We were required to move the bulkhead, which is what's driving this objection. Ms. Gina Rigdon should be aware, I'm surprised she's not, that we have a letter of non-jurisdiction, I mentioned it in my presentation. We are not in violation of any of those things. And I think, um, that, um, you know, as for these policies and procedures, I just, I flatly disagree with them. I do understand.
We're, we're only going to deal with zoning. Excuse me. Only dealing with zoning.
Okay, so, so, so that doesn't have anything to do with a bulkhead or anything else. Quite happy to go back to the surveyor and ask him to confirm that and certainly work with our own architect.
And speaking of.
But I'm in the world of zoning here, that's what I'm here for. I'm not here for a wetland permit or.
That's all we're here for, if I had a name tag in front of it, it'd say ZBN. That's all we're concerned with.
Okay, well, I would like you to speak, when you speak with the surveyor, I'd like to also, you know, also speak with the surveyor about verifying, uh, the dimensions of the property, whether they have changed since, between, you know, twenty-seven, whenever the, the survey was spared, I think it was twenty seventeen, twenty-eight and, and now. So, you know, that, that's something I definitely would, would like you to clarify. But in addition, uh, you know, we have, uh, you know, the, the Brody's or adjacent property owners who have concerns. And I also, as I asked them, wanted to ask you if you can, if you, if you are willing to communicate with them, willing to, if necessary, have, uh, the, the applicant, the owner, uh, communicate with them about their concerns?
Yes, I'm well aware of the Brody's, they obtained the permits for their house.
Okay, but are you willing to communicate with them about this application?
Yes.
Okay, good, good, okay. Another thing I hadn't mentioned before, uh, that's part of this application, I just, for the record, is that apparently, and you did it, you did mention in your presentation, the pool was constructed with permits. And then, yes, permits were issued in error by the building department because you needed variance for it. So I just want to make sure that that is, is, is clear for the record. This is a, a different situation than someone building without permits, it's someone building with permits. But apparently the permits were issued in error. So I just want to make sure that's clear. Just, just that.
The other point too is it complies with the setbacks.
Yeah, it's just apparently.
The minimum side yard setback.
Correct. Right, right.
Not the total side yard setback or some other setbacks, that's why you're here.
But, but, but my point was that, Brian, that if you look at the code, if you read eighty-three K, it allows for this reduction of all dimensional requirements for a principal dwelling up to fifty percent. So if your total side yard setback, in this case in an R ten zone, is twenty-five feet for a principal dwelling, that's ten on one side, fifteen on the other, conceivably. That gets halved, which means these, the, 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 the total side yard is not twenty-five. It's twelve and a half. Because the total side yard requirement appears in three thirty dash eleven, which is the dimensional table of, the table of dimensional regulations. So that, that's my point. I, I don't believe that you're violated of that because you get that relief.
Okay, so you think that the, that the applicant doesn't need relief for the pool?
Well, the pool already got a building permit, that's why it got a building permit, that's my point. I would have been before you, I would think, right? If it was violated.
Well, I, I think it's not individually for the pool, it's for the location of the pool that you do or did have a building permit for. But now, when you incorporate the new proposed house, it becomes why you're here.
No, but I still get the relief from the principal dwelling, is what I'm saying.
And I think that's a good argument, I'll look into that. I think there's going to be revisions to the application, so I think that's, you know, could change.
Right. And speaking of the building apartments, we got comments from the building department, as we have on a bunch of applications tonight. So I want to read, read those into the record. I don't know, Bruce, whether you've seen them already, but I want to read them in.
I have.
You have seen them already? Okay.
Yes.
So this is from Marjorie Riley, Building Inspector. One, it has been determined that the subject property is to be considered a waterfront lot. Therefore, the east of the lot line, Cliff Drive, is a rear yard. See email from Dennis O'Rourke to Bruce Anderson dated September fourteen, twenty twenty. Number two, the chief building inspector Dennis O'Rourke considers the proposed dwelling to be a three-story dwelling based on the plans dated nine sixteen, twenty twenty, drawn by Catherine Fee for the proposed renovation. Catherine Fee Architect. Three, building permit P zero eight two four three three was issued for the swimming pool shown on the survey as C O N C pool slash U, U slash C, concrete pool under construction. However, it has been brought to our attention that this location requires variances as stated in the advertisement. So I think we've covered most of these issues, but I just wanted to, you know, read that into the record.
All righty, Michael.
So we're, we're going to continue this. And I think Bruce, you're going to have some discussions with your applicant around making some revisions to this. I personally think that it's it's an overreaching application with, with too big of a house. I think that the, after visiting the location today, I know that you've pointed out that we've granted pyramid relief for several other properties in in Bay Point, however, this property is very close to the northerly property line and the house to the north of it is pretty close to the, to the same property line. So I think that the impact of the pyramid is going to be exacerbated on this lot. So we will want to schedule this for another upcoming meeting. Candace, can you tell us when we'll have some room or Bruce, can you tell us when you'd be interested in coming back? Do you? When would you like to?
Well, you have a December seventeenth.
That happens, that happens.
No, no, not.
Second meeting in July, twenty twenty-one.
How about the January?
So we're looking in January.
Seventh of the twenty-first.
Yeah, seventh of the twenty-first.
Seventh or the twenty-first of January, Bruce?
I'll take the seventh.
Okay. So we'll keep this application open for all purposes and schedule it for another appearance on the seventh of January, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Mr. Daley.
Hi.
Mr. De Sessa.
Hi.
Mr. Han.
Hi.
McCurtis.
Hi.
Mr. Tahill.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Hereabouts, I thank you all for your comments this evening. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.
Okay, item two on the agenda is Round Dune Inc., one-on-one Round Dune Road in East Quogue, self-accounting tax map, nine hundred dash three eighty-five dash two dash fourteen. Applicant requesting relief from town code one thirty-eight dash twenty G. Notification of administrator, duration of emergency authorization. The applicant received an emergency coastal erosion management permit number E C E one nine triple zero one for the installation of dune stabilizing Geo cubes as requesting relief beyond the six months permitted by town code and any other relief necessary.
Court has jurisdiction?
Good evening.
Aaron?
Yes, Aaron.
Maybe Karen Hoag?
Correct, it's Aram and Karen this evening. Mr. Chairman, good evening.
No problem, Aaron, to set the story in, if you can state your name and address, please.
Aram Turcunian, First Coastal Corporation, West Hampton Beach, New York, on behalf of the applicant.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing about the truth?
I do.
Thank you. You can tell us your comments on the application, or I'm not sure whether you and Karen are both doing presentations or how, how you're doing that.
I, I, I'm going to start off and then Karen's going to join in.
Okay, no problem.
Charles, if you could give me a screen share, I have a PowerPoint I'd like to run through with the board. I think it'd be the easiest way to understand the application.
You may dive in.
Aaron, Keith Tuttle, just so you know, I went down there today to try to gain access to the property because I was concerned about the storm for Monday because it looks like the inlet took a beating down there. And I wanted to see what the situation was down there at this particular property. But there was no way to gain access to it unless I drove up to the next road and walked in by, by the, by the dunes, you know?
Yeah, that's, they have a degree of vandalism there in the winter, so they, they do tend to close that off and the only really way is through Dolphin Lane. But I have some photos in my presentation tonight that, that will speak to the conditions this week.
Yes, and there, and there were actually a lot of photos in the submissions that were very helpful in terms of understanding what's going on.
Well, I just hope you aren't vandalizing the dunes and the sand and everything else. I wanted to see what happened with the storm for Monday and I, and Saturday's supposed to be a norista, bub. I'm interested to see what happens after that.
Yes, yes, yeah, hopefully, hopefully we will. So, good evening, members of the board. I come before you tonight to seek a request for an extension of time variance on this application of an emergency Geo cube project for Round Dune. I will walk you through about twenty slides and then be happy to take questions. It won't take me twenty minutes, it'll take less time than that. So this is just the specific relief that we're requesting. In your package, there is a, a report that I wrote. And what I'm presenting to you this evening is in essence a synopsis of that report. So what's in this PowerPoint, which I will have hard copies delivered for the file, is, is a synopsis out of that report to, if you have that paper copy in front of you, you can also follow along that way. Whatever is most convenient for you. So as we talk, we're talking about a time extension. And the time extension is really based on the fact that because of the current site conditions have not substantially changed for the better since the emergency was declared and the Geo cubes were installed. There, in essence, an emergency continues to exist at the site. And that removal of the Geo cubes at, at this point would be from some point of view, you know, a fool's errand, because the moment that you remove the Geo cubes, you would be back to an emergency condition, which would authorize the reuse of the Geo cubes. So instead of being a slave to.
Oh, you're indicating you don't have an emergency situation down there right now, Aaron?
Well, I'm, no, o- only because the Geo cubes are in place. If you were to remove them, I think you would have an emergency situation again. So the Geo cubes are the only thing that are standing between the emergency and the present condition, which is an interim, more or less stable condition. So that, that is the basis why we come in front of you. We don't want to create, spend a lot of time, money and, and dig up the dune to create a condition that is warrants reinstallation of the same exact thing. In the backdrop of this is the Fire Island to Montauk Point Plan, which many of you are familiar with. But for those of you who are not, this is a federal, state, county, town beach restoration program that's going to restore the beach from Shinakok Inlet all the way through to the village of Quogue in a similar way that was done in the village of West Hampton Dunes many years ago and continues to work well today. That project is scheduled for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-three timeframe. And depending on when the federal government and the state government and all of the different agreements can be reached and executed and the project built, what we're asking for is a time extension through that period. This is the site of Round Dune. It's a, it's a four-building condominium complex built in the sixties on one-on-one Dune Road in East Quogue. It's a four-point-eight acre parcel. It's got seventy-two co-op units and four buildings. It was built in the, in the early sixties. When it was built, I'm not going to bore you with the complete history, but when it was built, there was several hundred feet of dune and beach in front of it. And as you'll see, that condition has substantially changed. For your information, the proximate cause of that change is the erosion caused by the sand trapping at Shinakok Inlet. But I'm not going to go into a whole history of what that is tonight with the board. This is what the Round Dune looked like in two thousand and sixteen. And you can see that here are the four buildings. You can see they have a sun deck here, a well-vegetated dune. There's sand fence in front of it. This lighter colored sand is the high sandy beach and this darker colored sand is more or less the high waterline. That condition radically changed last year. The dune is completely eroded away. The sun deck is sitting in the water and the pilings of the buildings were exposed. This is the same day from a slight, from, from the angle looking to the northwest. And it just illustrates the same condition, the building is being undermined. These pilings are quite old, we do not know the depth that they're buried to. One of the issues is that on these older buildings, they did not drive the pilings to the FEMA depth required in, in the modern code, which is ten feet below sea level. And so I've personally witnessed a lot of these homes where they failed catastrophically because the pilings are only driven in just to around sea level, not below. The, the applicant obtained the emergency permit that Mr. Tuttle mentioned. The Geo cubes were permitted to be installed in tiers and covered with beach compatible sand. That emergency permit is in your file. We also obtained permits from New York State DEC and the Southampton Town Trustees. They were installed in between January and April. A bond was filed with the town of Southampton as per the permit requirements. Project was built to specification. Here were covered with dune compatible sand planted with native beach grass. The, the sundex seaward of the Geo cubes was removed as per the conditions of the permit. Sand fence was installed and the Geo cubes have remained covered ever since. This is in a drone shot of the installation before the Geo cubes are covered. This is a drone shot of the installation before the, the, the Geo cubes are covered and the demolition of the sun deck in compliance with the code, with the, the permit that was issued. This is what it looked like at the end of the summer. The sand fence is installed. The sand is covering all of the cubes and beach grass has been planted on the dune. Everything is in full compliance with all regulatory permits and conditions of those permits. The negative.
You got a picture from this week, Aaron? I'd like to know what it looks like today.
Okay, I got one. That's my next picture.
It's like.
So the negative impacts of the removal are precisely what I discussed in the opening, which is the moment you take them out, you create an emergency condition because the beach is so narrow and so low here that even minor storms like Monday, Monday was a nice blow. It came out of the south for about a day at thirty knots. We had about fourteen-foot seas offshore, but we only had about a two-foot tide surge. But even a storm like that pushes the waves all the way up against the dune. And so what I'm showing you here is this is the watermark from the waves washing up onto the dune face. And you can see the collection of all of the storm rack behind the sand fence. So even a minor storm like we had on Monday and that Keith was going to investigate would reach all the way back to where these structures are. And if we had a major storm, not even a sandy level storm, but something else below that, a storm like we had last fall in, in twenty nineteen, it would be back under the building again and perhaps completely undermine the piling structures. So I think it's important to understand that the Geo cubes serve as an interim measure. It's not designed to be a permanent fix because it can't be. This beach needs to be re-nourished with sand. But the good news is, in the, in the time it's been in, there are no observed adverse environmental impacts. There's no erosion, increased erosion at our site or adjacent to our site. The Geo cubes are covered with sand stabilized with beach grass. There's no interference in the natural toral beach processes and property life and resources are being protected. I just want to point out that these Geo cubes are in full compliance with the DEC and the town trustee permits. The DEC permit has a condition in it that we must maintain sand cover over these Geo cubes. The trustees have the same condition. And, and the applicant has secured that obligation with a bond through the, with the town of Southampton, which also had the same condition in the emergency permit. Where we, we constructed the project in accordance with the plans. We've maintained the, the cover, we have submitted the bond and we provided NASBIL survey for the Southampton Town Trustees.
Is that a current bond or is that expired?
I think it's a cash bond.
Okay.
Karen can speak to that. The Geo cubes are in full compliance with the emergency permit that was issued and with the other permits as I just described. And our request is to extend the time of this emergency permit because the emergency still exists. If not for the Geo cubes, we would be in front of you. We would be at the coastal erosion hazard administrator's office asking for an emergency permit. And I believe that the fact that they issued one in the past, they would issue one again in the same conditions, the same physical conditions. And that is the, the conclusion of my presentation. Karen, if you could speak to the the issue about the bond, I believe you're more familiar with that than I am.
Sure, yes, just, just to clarify, it's a cash bond. And one thing I wanted to point out is that we are, we're still waiting for the town environmental department for Janice Shearer to issue a memo on the application. And we would like an opportunity, once it is issued, that we have an opportunity to review it and respond to it.
Just state your, your name and.
I'm sorry. Sure. It is Karen Hoag from Timmy Latham on behalf of Round Dune. So what, one other point I wanted to just make in addition to the, the town environmental memo is that I just received a copy of the town building department denial letter, which was issued from Dennis O'Rourke. And I have just gotten it from Candace a little bit ago. And on it, there, there are two additional variants. And on it, there, there are two additional variance items that are listed on here for an accessory structure for a garage and a side yard. So I just want to clarify that that's not part of this application. So I'm not quite sure where that is coming from and it wasn't part of the notice or, you know, I guess that's something I can clarify with, with Dennis why that's on here.
It, it, you must, she must have sent you something wacky because our, our notes only have the, you know, Fire Island Inlets Montauk Point comment.
Oh, okay. All right. So what, okay. So what I have is may have been an, an old denial letter.
Maybe, or maybe it's like the front and back of something else.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, thanks for clarifying that.
I'm sorry. Hi Karen. It's Candace.
Hi Candace.
Yeah. So the bottom of it's correct. It's just that there's two, I see what you see. Those two check marks on those boxes at the top, yeah, those should not be there. It has nothing to do with your-
Oh, I see. Yep. I see what you're saying.
They, when they did the, when they did the denial sheet, they didn't un, unmark those boxes. So it has nothing to do with your application.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
All right. So, you know, I just want to mention just at the outset, this is a pretty serious situation that this property is facing. And the alternative to us addressing this through this application would be for your, for the applicant to continually remove the Geo tubes, get an emergency, another emergency permit and restore that, which would take time, which in itself would endanger the, the parcel. So that, so, so that is a very unusual situation in that respect. But I also want to say that, you know, I generally like to do things in increments of time. And the fact that it's going to take a long time, you know, maybe a year or longer before the beach replenishment is completed, is sort of open ended. We don't know exactly when that's going to be done. So I'm just a little bit concerned about how we handle the timeframe. But other than that, the pictures speak volumes as to what the situation is on this parcel. So I know, and I know at least there's a, one person who's waiting to be heard from the public. But wanted to ask if other members of the board have any questions or comments for Aaron McCarron.
Aaron, it's Cornelius here. The Geo cubes are not exposed at the moment, right? In your photo, they're, they're still covered in sand?
That's correct.
Right.
Take a picture on Sunday and send it to us.
Well, it, it also might be a good thing to make, to provide access for us to go and evaluate it ourselves. I don't know if you can do that or not, but-
Oh, I can, yeah, I can definitely. I can definitely arrange for that. And actually, the better way to see it, Michael, is, is to go, is down on the beach because when you're up on top, well, we can, whichever way you want to do it. I can escort you down the beach and take you in a four wheel drive, or I can make arrangements for you to come in through the, through the property. Just let me know what's convenient for you and I'll make the arrangement.
All right. Well, Keith is the main one. So what if you, if Keith is satisfied?
I, I think, I think Karen's right too. I think, you know, we'll, we'll have more guidance once we hear back from the Coastal Erosion Hazard Administrator. Because this is unlike the other one we saw where, you know, the other, the other Geo cube application you saw, you know, they were so barred, buried, understand that it was worth it to keep them in, you know? Now it's, you know, it'll be up to them whether they think it's better to keep them in or, or replace them. I don't know. I think, you know, they'll have to come back once we get a memo.
So I have a couple of other questions for you, for Aram, and that is with the, the financing conditions for the federal government and the state government. Do you see any chance that FIMP is going to be delayed even further as a result of budget issues? So we've said 2022, 23. Is that realistic? Is there any reason to believe that it might be delayed?
Yes, that is realistic. And, and the reason is because in the Hurricane Sandy supplemental bill that was passed by Congress and signed by the president, the money was actually appropriated. It wasn't just authorized. So it's not subject to a further budget appropriation. The money is sitting in the account ready to go. So really at this point, it's really a matter of getting the contract signed between the federal, state and local governments, including Suffolk County and the town, and, and lining up the lands easements and rights away. So the budget part is not an issue. That, that is 100% federally funded and the money is in the account.
Okay. Second question is what would be the cost of removal of the Geo cubes approximately?
That's, I, I don't have the, I don't have the answer to that one off the top of my head. But I, I can get, I can get to the number. I, Karen, I, we do a calculation in our thing. What's, what is the amount of our cash bond? I thought that that was tied to-
Right. The cash bond was, I believe it was 46,000. Bear with me one second. It was 47,375.
And that, that, that's probably tied to our cost estimate for removal.
Okay.
For removal?
Yeah, for removal, yeah.
Aaron, you tell it be 47 grand to give me those Geo cubes. You gotta be kidding me.
So that's not, that's not a bond to ensure that the Geo cubes remain covered with sand and beach grasses. But that would be, I'd like to, I'd like to be, I'd like to be sure of what that bond is specifically addressing. Because one of my thoughts was, let's say, you know, if we were to agree to extend this for a year or, you know, or, or some period, perhaps having a bond for removal would be a good idea.
That's often a condition of just the emergency managed, emergency permit, I think.
Yeah. And it was, so I, I can send you a copy of that as well as the town resolution adopting it.
Okay. Another question is, has, has the, have the owners had any conversation or gone into any thinking about redevelopment of this property? I mean, because, you know, this finger in the dyke Band-Aid type of approach, you know, as, as we all know, sea level is rising and it, it, it may be more responsible ultimately to look at redeveloping and retreating these very forward, forward facing buildings on this lot, rather than continuing to-
Where are you going to retreat to, Dune Road?
Well, I mean, there's, it's a 4. X acre property and there, it, it's something that should be considered. I mean, the whole coast of the United States is, is, sooner or later have to consider retreating. And Aram, has there been any conversations with the owners around that?
Yes, we, we have had discussions about that. You know, what, what we're up against here is, is a series of factors that, that really, you know, stymie any type of relocation of the existing structures. In the sense of to, in order to comply with the sanitary code alone right now, there, there's no, there's not enough room on the site to build the sanitary system that would comply with, you know, with the code, number one. Number two, moving, if we were to move the buildings back, we could only move them back about 10 or 15 feet at some tremendous cost because there's not a lot of distance between them. And of course, you don't want the buildings on top of each other. As far as redevelopment goes, I mean, you're talking about a, you know, I, I would say, you know, like a $10 million project to redo 72, you know, co-op units in, in any fashion. I, I don't know that that is in the cards. It's certainly worthy of a discussion. But I think you put that up against the fact that the Fire Island to Montauk Point Plan has a 30-year lifetime for which the, the federal and state government are committed to maintaining that, the width of the beach and the height of the dune. And I think the redevelopment talk comes in that period of time, not while we're standing at the edge of the abyss.
Okay. I think Mike's bringing up these points is, is important because, you know, ultimately there are long-term issues to think about with this, with this property. In the short term, you know, I myself, and I think I speak for, for the members of the board, we don't want to see, you know, something terrible happen to what's currently there. In the long term, these are issues. These are issues for people with, you know, lot of waterfront, oceanfront properties and waterfront properties. So it is a, a larger, there are larger issues here, but in this instance, we have pretty much, you know, an emergency situation that's not going to let up, at least not in the near future. Not, not until the replenishment is completed.
I would, I would encourage the, the owners to consider figuring out who to start conversations with. I don't know if it would be the town board or the planning department or whatever about the possibility of redeveloping this site and moving these buildings or redeveloping them in a, in a responsible way sooner rather than later because they're the most forward buildings of, to the ocean in that entire stretch. And, you know, it's, again, the Band-Aid approach is, is perhaps not the, not the best long-term approach.
Don't forget, we got a 25-unit condo application in front of us from Dockers, which is radical district too.
Right, right. Right. All right. Well, thank you, Aaron. Yeah, okay. And I know there are people from the public who want to be heard, but before I do that, any other questions for Aaron or Karen members? Or, or from UKD. Okay. If not, I know, well, I know Regina's waiting to be heard. Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Round Dune Inc.? This is for 101 Dune Road in East Quogue. If you would like to be heard, this will be the time to let us know.
With Ginger.
Charlie, did they have their hands up?
I think Regina wanted to speak.
Regina definitely wanted to, but maybe she stepped away for a minute. Which would really be a shame.
I'm, she's there.
I'm here, buddy.
Okay.
My video won't start. The host stopped the video, so.
No problem. Take your time.
Okay. Well, anyway, you can hear me.
You can hear you. And, and even though I can't see you, I do have to swear you in anyway because it's a different application.
Okay, you can see my hand out.
Yeah. So if you just state your name and address.
Regina Rigdon, U K R shores, 235 Trout Brook Lane, Riverhead, New York.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Tell us your comments on this application.
My video still won't start. I was the original agent on the application and Aram took it over. I dealt with a tremendous amount of red tape. I got emergency approvals from the DEC as well as Southampton Town Trustees that got stymied at the conservation board level that wouldn't allow stand backs. Hence the destruction of that entire deck and almost one of the, front of one of the condos came down. Thank you, Aram, for taking it over. And I do support the application. This problem is not going away. It's pre-existing non-conforming structure, so historical structure, actually. And there's, it's, it sits in sort of a horseshoe shaped U gully in, in Quogue that lacks a natural sandbar. So the deep water is going to continually batter this area until a more permanent solution is, is comes up. I strongly urge the board to extend the period six months, a year or longer until there is a permanent solution available. So in closing, I just wanted to support the application.
Okay. Any questions for Regina, members of the board? Okay. Otherwise, Regina, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who's, who's waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Round Dune Inc. We're 101 Dune Road in East Quogue. If so, you need to let us know right now. Do we have any hands, Charlie?
No hands.
No hands. Okay. All right. So Brian, this one is yours.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. De Sessa makes a motion, I, we are waiting for Janice's report, but I just want to make sure, you know, that, that I got the list of things that the board is interested in. And then, and I'll reach out to Janet to talk to her about them. One is the bond. The second is a timeframe. I wrote down monitoring and then, and also put down alternatives. And that, that's, that's my recollection of, of the list. Would that be correct?
I think so. Is there anything else that we, that we want Aram to provide?
I would say clarity on the, on the bond. If that bond is there for removal or for maintenance of the covering sand and grass.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian? And I guess the question I have is, do we want to leave it open for all purposes or just written submissions?
I, I think you should have one more hearing on this because like I said, I do, this is, is so different from the last one we heard. It's worth just discussing.
All right. So based on calendar availability, would it be the first or second meeting of January, Candace?
You have, right now you have approximately maybe 10 on January 7th. And then you have right now about eight on January 21st. Do you have February 4th and February 18th? So it's up to you.
Aram, do you have a preference on the first or second meeting in January?
I actually have a conflict on the first meeting in January.
That was my next question, Ms. Oak. So yes, so we can go for this. My motion will be to keep it open for all purposes till the second meeting of January. It will be January 21st.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Guy, Mrs. Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Han.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair of Ozai, thank you for your presentation this evening. Have a good rest tonight.
Thank you.
Good luck Saturday.
Okay. And I guess we can do one more and then we'll have a break unless people want to have a break now. We can do one more.
Yeah, still one more.
Okay.
I have three on the agenda is Three Pecanic Crest LLC, two Pecanic, three Pecanic, two Pecanic Crest, I'm sorry. Should have got killed, self-accident tax map, 900 dash 191 dash 4 dash 11. I'm sorry. I called it wrong. It's Two Pecanic Crest LLC, not Two Pecanic Crest in Shinnecock Hills. I have a question leave from the following provisions of the town code. 330 dash 84D pyramid height for a proposed encroachment in the amount of 185 cubic feet for the proposed two-story dwelling. And 330 dash 76D placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts in 330 dash A3C yards to allow the proposed swimming pool to be located within the required minimum side yard for the principal building and a non-conforming lot in any other relief necessary.
What has jurisdiction?
Evening Regina. I have to swear you in yet again.
Again.
Address, please.
Gina Rigdon, 235 Trout Brook Lane, Riverhead, New York. 10191.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you tell us about the application, please?
It is Two Pecanic Crescent, Shinnecock Hills, owned by Two Pecanic Crescent LLC. We're proposing to actually demolish the existing residence, which I don't know if anyone has been there. It's, it's completely inhabitable. We're proposing a new two-story, single-family dwelling. The, I don't know if you, Candace, do you have the plan? Can you bring the plans up or, or no? We do have a situation where Marty has asked us to shift everything to the west slightly. Candace and Marjorie had reviewed the new site plan on which a certain, it hasn't been plotted on survey yet. Actually today, I just don't have it. But basically it would be shifting the house. We're proposing it from the inlet roadside at 32.8 and then from the private road at 47.3. The new, Candace, do you have the new one in comparison that I sent? The new, Candace, do you have the new one in comparison that I sent?
I don't think so.
Okay. I can submit it in writing when, once it's on the survey. I'll have this. But we're actually moving, we ended up mirroring the house basically and flipping it and shifting it to the west towards the private road. So I would say that, yeah, the northwest-ish. So it, the new proposal that is in front of the Conservation Board now has the house at 40 feet from inlet road, so further away, uh, rather than 32.8. I'm going blind. And then the new house is 40 feet from private road. And the original was 47.3. So there's a little bit of a difference. So about seven feet shifted towards private road, which I'm understanding the board is considering my rear yard. And then we shifted the garage to the minimum distance between the house, the detached garage of five feet, which is what's required.
How does this affect your pyramid relief that you're requesting?
Um, you know what? That's a really good question. I don't have it calculated yet. Because, um, it's actually going to make it, uh, less because we were asking for pyramid relief towards the inlet roadside. Which wasn't, it honestly wasn't substantial. It was 185 cubic feet. And so it'll probably be less, considerably less, maybe 150 cubic feet because we're actually moving it further away. Another six-ish or so feet away. So it'll be a lot less, if at all any. I need to confirm that with the architect.
Okay.
And Marty still hasn't gotten back to me whether or not he's going to accept the proposal. He, I had figured out that because if that's my rear yard, then I have, uh, if we redid the pool, we could shift everything a little bit closer to that west, northwest property lawn because my minimum setback is 10 for the pool. And now it's this weird kidney shape. So if we made the pool, um, skinnier basically and shifted it 10 feet to the side yard, that gave us a little bit more room. So, and it's further away from the water. Uh, so it's at 56 feet now on versus 51.3 for the weird kidney-shaped old pool that needs to be redone anyway. So it, it's up to the board, but if the board wants to hold it over, um, to confirm the reduced pyramid calculations and see the new plot on the survey, um, I would be more than willing to hold it over to the next meeting to get this out of the horse's mouth for Marty.
I mean, it makes sense to me. We don't have the, the plans in our hands as it is, so.
Yeah, they'll be considerably better. The relief would be less, but a little bit more towards the rear yard, which is the private road. So about seven foot difference.
Do you have a copy of the report from Ms. Riley?
Where?
Oh, with the building department comments, Regina.
Oh, sure.
Do you have a copy of that?
I don't. Ashley, no, I don't. Candace, maybe you could email it.
I think you should get that.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let me read them into the record.
Okay.
So, uh, this was, uh, Marjorie Riley, Building Inspector. Number one, uh, it's a, it kind of goes along, but basically they want to, you know, verify that the pyramid calculations are done correctly. Uh, so making sure it's using that 1988, um, and making sure that the measurements are being calculated correctly. So rather than reading the whole thing, but basically that's what number one is. They'd like to, they often to submit, you know, information to verify the accuracy of the diagram and pyramid calculations. Number two, the survey shall be revised to coincide with the proposed site plan prepared by Michael James Palladino, Architect PC, dated November 12th, 2020. Three, if the site plan is going to be referenced in the final ZVA decision, the site plan shall be revised to indicate the survey used to create the site plan, and the site plan must be sealed and signed. And four, the proposed principal front yard setback of 24.8 feet is permitted and the existing dwelling has a pre-existing setback of 19.6 feet.
Okay.
And that's it.
Uh, what date do you have for the next? I'll make sure I have everything together for you.
Yeah, I think probably the first meeting in January, January 7th. Still enough, but I think, I think we still have room there.
Candace?
Yes.
We have room. Okay.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
I will have it ready.
Before we do that, I want to ask, are there any other questions of, uh, of members of the board of Regina? Is there anyone from the public who is waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Two Pecanic Crescent LLC, which is located at Two Pecanic Crescent in Tuckahoe? If you would like to be heard, if you can let us know, this will be the time.
I see no hands.
No hands. Okay. If not, Aquinilius, it's yours.
Move to, uh, hold it open for all purposes until our January 7th meeting.
Second.
Thank you.
Here, Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Yan.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Toddhill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair of Ozai, and it's been two hours. We're going to take a short break.
All right. Item four on the agenda is 85 Eastway LLC. 85 Eastway Drive in Schittick Hills, Self-accounts Tax Map 900-233-2-1. Applicant request a determination as to whether or not the proposed bar, barn, formerly the main dwelling, is a subordinate or incidental building pursuant to Town Code 330-5 definitions because of its size in proportion to the proposed main dwelling and its use. In addition, applicant request relief from the following provisions of the Town Code. One, to allow the relocation of the existing dwelling, which will be converted into an accessory building barn on a non-conforming lot. 330-706D Placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And 330-83C Yards to allow the accessory building barn to be located within the required front yard of the principal building. Two, 330-11 Residential Districts Table of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory distance from street setback front yard of 34 feet plus or minus Westley Property Line, Eastway Drive, where 90 feet is required. And accessory distance from street setback front yard of 88 feet plus or minus Northerly Property Line, Montauk Highway, where 90 feet is required. Three, 330-77D Placement of the accessory building structures and uses in resident districts to allow the accessory building barn to have a height of 27 feet where a maximum of 20 feet is permitted. Two, for deck attached to the front of the proposed two-story dwelling. 330-83A4 To allow a deck higher than one foot above ground level to be located within the required front yard. For the swimming pool, 330-11 For an accessory distance from street setback front yard of 63.43 feet where 90 feet is required. Four, for the parking area, 330-94 Schedule of off-street parking space requirements for residential uses to allow accessory parking spaces in the required front yard and any other relief necessary.
What has jurisdiction?
Good evening, Regina.
This is a record.
It is a record. Name and address, please.
Regina Rigdon, DKR Shores, 235 Trout Brook Lane, Riverhead, New York, 1191.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you tell us about the application?
This is an unusual application, uh, for sure, something that doesn't, uh, normally come before the board. Uh, we have a historic structure located in Atterbury Hills, designed by a semi-famous Grosner Atterbury. It's part of a handful that are left of a small, Southampton summer colony that was designed by Mr. Atterbury in, in Atterbury Hills in Sugarloaf Acres, it was called. So the barn that had existed circa 1899 roughly or so was moved to the present location where it is now sometime after 1916. Um, in the package that you have, um, in front of you, um, there were two different landmarks and a little bit of history about the property. The barn had been converted, uh, to a three-bedroom, three-bath residence. My client, uh, purchased the home in 2018 and held bent on wanting to restore this barn. They started the permitting themselves. Uh, and they, uh, got a permit to lift the house and then put it on top of a new foundation. That's where I came in. During the engineering, um, and during the inspections, um, Dave Kanji said, why are you keeping this? And they were in love with this building, um, and the historical, uh, nature of it. It's known for, um, Atterbury was known for a rambling style architecture. Kind of an arts and crafts style with a lot of hipged, uh, gables, dormers. This barn happens to be a gambral style, um, with a lot of, uh, hipped dormers, uh, some very, um, vintage windows that still do exist. So they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars already trying to save this barn. And the engineer, basically, uh, during the inspections, trying to rehab this barn and make it structurally sound, um, with the new 2020, it was, uh, energy codes. It was really 2018 to 20 now, since it changed in May. We simply cannot, um, make the energy compliance and meet the requirements for the energy codes, um, in this structure. So Dave Kanji during his inspection said, you know, why don't you just tear it down and build a new house? But they contacted Landmarks, uh, with Michelle and Mayan, her husband. Spent hours of, um, coordination with landmarks, talking to Mr. Wilcox, uh, Mr. Hein, um, doing a lot of research on their own about, uh, the architect Atterbury. Um, and they really would like to preserve this, and we have full support of landmarks, uh, to landmark the structure. And it, the location that you see right now, um, is representative of right now, the driveway actually is accessed through Montauk Highway. And as you know, in that area, County Road 80, it's really busy. You can't see coming up around that hill. Um, it's kind of a dangerous entrance. So the new driveway is actually going to access, um, 85 Eastway. It's actually going to access 85 on the private road where it should have probably been originally. As you could see, it has two front yards. It has Montauk Highway, County Road 80, and it has a, a small private road on named Eastway. That's sort of at the top of the hill in Sugar Acres. So they're going to relocate the driveway, um, and the reason the barn is where it is right now basically in mirroring the new house, um, is to provide, um, a contrast sort of between historic and a new contemporary look. They really wanted to preserve it and make it be seen from the road because it's one of those buildings that deserves to be seen from the road. There's a couple of them around. I don't know if you're still, um, if you're, how familiar you are with the area, but even on Southampton Old College campus, that big white historical building next to the windmill, that was one of Atterbury's buildings. There's a couple of more on Montauk Highway. Um, there's one on East Montauk Highway, and I'm not sure if I forwarded the entire report. But I, I think I did in my application. The historic house that's up on the college, that was designed by Atterbury. There's a couple on Montauk Highway. There's the famous Coggin House. Um, and that one is on Montauk Highway, number 409. So this particular area was, um, summer cottages where they came out and their friends and their horses and uh, they actually had cows. And this was actually one of the carriage houses you think that, um, their horses were in, and it was moved to this location sometime after 1916. We would like to preserve the building, um, the location of it. I know I'm asking for a lot of relief it being there, but we specifically wanted it viewed from the road. Um, it's a presentation of historical value. And we wanted the entrance to come off of Eastway. You can see the house that's there uh, from the road through the trees. Um, and if we move it over even a little bit more towards Eastway, you'll be able to actually really see uh, the beauty of it from Montauk Highway as you're driving down the road. That's really important, uh, to the client. If we're going to preserve something, I'd like it to be seen. Um, I know it's a tremendous amount of, of relief we're asking. It's a required front yard. It's 90 feet. We're asking for 63, I'm sorry, 34 feet. That's, that's a lot of relief for a building. So I did leave that up in the air with the client, uh, that the board, if they even entertained this, um, may ask it to be relocated, um, you know, on the, uh, south side.
Regina, can, can we hit the five factors? I appreciate the background. It's just getting a little late, so if we could.
Go for it.
That would be great.
So, um, it, it is a character with neighborhood. We, um, it will cause no environmental impacts whatsoever. The relocation of the driveway to Eastway will actually, um, benefit, uh, for purpose and safety, uh, as a whole. Improving the barn will enhance the community value, um, as well as preserving a historical structure. We have full backing of landmarks to restore this building. Um, I'm asking the board to look kindly on the application.
Okay. So I just want to ask, um, from the survey, it appears to me, uh, that the barn is bigger than the house.
It's actually, I think it's exactly the same size. I have to get.
Bigger?
It's hard to zoom in.
So then, so then the question becomes, and the problem in my view, as much as I want to support a historic structure, as much as I want to support the concept, that we would have to conclude that an accessory structure that is the same size as the house. The primary residence. There we go. See, it looks bigger. We would have to conclude that the accessory structure is accessory when it's the same size and not bigger.
So we should build a bigger house. Is that what we should do?
Well, you should connect it to the house.
You could add to the house. Well, I mean, really, it's a, it's a, it's a problem. It's a problem, Regina, because.
So if we connected it to the house, would the board look more favorably if we did like a heated breezeway or something?
Change it.
It's no longer than an extent, and, and a determination on an accessory structure. It's all your principal house, and you don't need half of the relief that you're asking for.
Correct.
Okay. This is why I left it up in the air on that application, you know, as far as the boards can send in their, their, um, recommendations. We are, uh, okay with your recommendations. We're trying to do anything and everything to save this building. So.
I would come back with a, a proposal that connects it to the main house.
Brian, thank you. I will, um, they will, and they might be on, actually. Michelle, Mayan, are you on? Oh, Mayan's on.
Mayan, I can just swear you in. So if you do not state, unless you're an attorney, you can state your name and address, please.
Mayan Metzer, uh, 4959 Henry Hudson Parkway, uh, Bronx, New York is my main residence. Or, or did you mean, uh, 85 Eastway Drive?
Whichever.
Okay. Okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Um, Regina, tell us your, your thoughts, your comments.
Yeah. So, uh, first of all, just to address what you were saying, that it's the same size as the house. The, the reason is very simple because we were, uh, working on restoring it. So we lifted it. We had to pour a new foundation. So that is why it's the same size of the house because we were planning to use that foundation for the new, new house. In terms of, um, your recommendation to connect it to the house, In terms of your recommendation to connect it to the house, we would love to do that. It's not a problem at all. Of course, our goal, because it's such a beautiful historic structure, not only because we spent so much time and money on it, just because it's a shame to tear it down and, and, you know, throw it to the dumpster. But i- if it means that we have to connect it, that's okay. But just another comment, this is never going to be a residence because it's going to remain a barn. So even if it was connected to the house, it would still be a barn.
That's, that's fine, it just, we've, we've never granted relief to have an accessory structure the same size. So we're trying to accomplish what your goal is in terms of preservation, which is admirable for this historic structure. But it helps us in granting the least amount of relief necessary to accomplish your, your proposal. And that could be by a breezeway. You don't have to build right next to it. I mean, you could have a heated and cooled connected breezeway that connects these structures. Then a majority of this relief is eliminated, which, which helps us.
Right.
That would be amazing, thank you.
It could be like an open glass heated breezeway. That connects the two structures.
That's something you guys can discuss and, and we don't, we don't need to be involved in that. But it's a good principle, you could, you could come back and see us and we can, you know.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, Mayan, how long do you think it would be to have the architect in the survey or redo this? And the board, what date do you have available?
Well. What do you ask?
I know, we're filling up.
Well, it's filling up, but it looks like we have a little bit of room left. You'll be the last taker for January twenty-first, the second meeting in January.
Okay, I'll take it. Mayan, is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Have a good wedding, everyone. Talking all night.
That's all right. Are there any other questions of members of the board? Is there anyone who is waiting to be heard on Zoom this evening, connecting on the application of eighty-five Eastway LLC? This is for eighty-five Eastway Drive in Schenochak Hills. If you would like to be heard, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
No hands. Okay, then I have a lead and I would move that we hold the application open for all purposes until our January twenty-first meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Ha.
Hi.
Ms. Burgess. Helen, you're muted.
Who's Helen?
Helen, Helen is muted. Helen?
I'm mute. She's still muting.
She's still. Thanks, Helen. Okay, Mr. Tuthill.
Hi.
Mr. Daly.
Hi.
Mr. Kelly.
Hi.
Mrs. Sessa.
Hi.
You're beside, thanks so much.
Happy holidays, everyone, have a good Christmas.
Thank you.
Happy New Year's too. See you soon, bye.
Bye.
Item five on the agenda, Scott and Jenny Dennis, Ted Marie Lane in North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash sixty-two, dash two dash twenty-four. Applicant requests relief for the following provisions of the town of Southampton Code. One, three thirty dash eleven residential district's table of dimensional regulations for a principal minimum side yard setback from northeast side of property of nine point one feet where fifteen feet is existing. A principal total side yard setback of twenty-four point one feet where forty-eight feet is existing. A proposed principal front yard setback of fifty-six point nine feet from Fish Cove Road where six feet is required. Offered a proposed addition to the existing dwelling and a principal front yard setback of forty-four feet plus a minus from Fish Cove Road where sixty feet is required. And two, three thirty dash eighty-four D Pyramid Height for a proposed encroachment in the amount of one thousand three hundred and eighty-four cubic feet for the proposed addition.
Board has jurisdiction. We're looking for Richard Matthew and Dave Sherwood.
Yep, Richard is there, just need you to unmute.
Richard, you're muted.
Can't hear you.
Got you, thank you.
There we go. Good evening, Richard.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Candace and Council, Richard Matthew, two ninety-five North Sea Road on behalf of the application.
Hold on, Richard, we're looking for Dave Sherwood too, Charles, you got him?
One moment.
Okay, go ahead, Richard.
As Keith pointed out, we're seeking four variances in order to build in addition to a single family dwelling that runs between Marie Lane and Fish Cove Road in North Sea. In the Fish Cove Road area, it's not part of the original subdivision, it's what's called described property. The lot is approximately ten thousand two hundred and sixty square feet. Existing dwelling, which is newly renovated, is thirteen hundred and eighty feet. We're seeking a six hundred and seventy-two feet addition for a total of two thousand fifty-two square feet. As presented, the plan requires, as I said, four variances. Side yard to nine feet on the north of the east side. And total side yard to twenty-four point one feet where thirty-eight would, would, sixty is required and thirty-eight would be the formula that arrived at the, the four tent rule. A pyramid is one thousand three hundred and eighty-four feet. And it. And lot coverage of twenty-one point eight feet where twenty feet is permitted. And that difference is about two hundred feet. The screen changed mostly caused me my concentration. The lot is, as I said, ten thousand two hundred and sixty-eight feet in an area zoning district of forty thousand square feet. So it's substantially undersized as a result of no, no action by my, my clients. The addition is the neighbor, character of the neighborhood is basically small lots. And, and some small, some not so small, some now very large houses have been built in the, in the neighborhood as well. So the character of the neighborhood is similar to what is being proposed here today. We had reached or been reached, contacted by the neighbors on both sides. The neighbor to the, on the left-hand side looking at the survey, excuse me, the right-hand side looking at the survey, that would be the easterly side, said John Nguyen, actually, that he had no objection to it because the, the addition is on the other side of the property. We also spoke to Tom Hayden, who is the neighbor most closely affected by the, the application and who opined that he was in, in opposition to it. We took a look at what we could do to mitigate it and we've come out with a proposal to take one foot off the height of the new addition, which would reduce the pyramid by three hundred and sixty square feet down to one thousand and twenty-four square cubic feet. Excuse me, that's square feet, cubic feet. And the height would not be a violation in any way. There are some windows on that side of the property that can be eliminated to give a sense of privacy to the owner adjacent. And also we could do some plantings to mitigate the impact of the addition. If you have any questions, I would be glad to answer.
I had in the application that there was pyramid relief required. I don't know if you, I may have missed the, do we need pyramid relief because you're with this application?
Yes, one thousand three hundred and, one thousand three hundred and eighty-four. However, we can reduce it by taking a foot off the top of the, of the building, reducing that to one thousand twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. All right. I guess I also, just looking at the survey, you're Fish Cove Road on one side and Marie Lane.
On the other side.
Yeah, so you have a limitation.
And, and the two subdivisions don't meet. Interestingly enough.
Okay, wow, all right. Okay, well, I mean, there's some setback relief here. Pretty modest pyramid relief, so I mean, we'll see if any of.
And the lot is, is entitled to the four tent relief under three thirty dash one fifteen. So if we exercise the, the four tents, we could actually go down to as little as ten feet, which is the minimum. Three, four tents by four tents, no less than ten feet. So we're asking for nine feet, which is one foot, one foot more than we get just using the four tent rule.
Have you heard from any of the neighbors?
Yes, I had mentioned that earlier. I spoke to the gentleman on the east side of the property, an attorney by the name of John Nguyen, who said that he wasn't concerned because the addition was on the other side of the property. I see that he's here to see me, I'm sure he's got something else to say. I spoke to the owner adjacent on the impacted side and he was in opposition and that's why we've tried to, to sharpen our pencil and see if we can come up with some way to lessen the impact and mitigate.
Yes, you had mentioned that, I missed that, okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions of members of the board?
Yeah, I had a question, Richard. I just, are all of the setbacks on the survey, you know, the, as we advertised it, some of it was like plus or minus? You know, what, what are the setbacks?
To what, Katie, I'm sorry?
Just for everything, like I see, you know, we advertised for nine point one, I see that, I see the total side. Fifty-six point nine.
Twenty-four point one.
Yep. Where's the fifty-six point nine from Fish?
There's the number, but there isn't a line that I can see.
There is a line, it's at the right-hand side of the, of the drawing of the survey.
Oh, I see it, because there were two fifty-six point nines, that's why. No, this one's fifty-six point eight.
Yeah, where's the fifty-six point nine?
Yeah.
I.
Or is it fifty-six point eight?
I believe it's depicted as fifty-six point eight.
Okay, so that's fifty-six point eight. And then principal front yard setback of forty-four plus or minus feet from Fish Cove Road, where's that?
I don't see that. The, the number that I have towards Fish Cove Road is fifty-six point eight. The forty-five point nine is to the, to the north to Marie Lane.
All right, so forty-five point nine to Marie Lane?
Yeah, and that doesn't change, that's the existing number.
Double up the quarter.
Yeah, the reason that Katie's asking about this is because, you know, any, any variance that we would be granting needs to be on the survey, that's all.
Yeah, I didn't understand, I was trying to compare it to what we advertised it for, so I just, you know.
Used to, yeah, yeah. We also have comments from the building department.
Okay.
Right, so this is what we got from Marjorie Riley, the lead inspector. Number one, the survey, pyramid diagram elevations shall be revised in accordance with the, the calculations that the town requires in order to correctly calculate the pyramid. So if, Richard, if you can check with Marjorie to.
Adam, can you speak that again, I missed you.
Sure, so the number, the first comment is that they want the survey and pyramid diagram and elevations. They, the building department wants to look at them to make sure that the pyramid calculation was done correctly. This is what we get, you know, sometimes from the building department, they want to apply the figures, particularly the pyramid figures. So they want to, you know, determine in the average natural grade elevation prior to disturbance. They want to have an architect calculate the average using the spot elevations as stated and draw a pyramid line from all property lines using the grade plane as applied to the subject's structure on the lot. To establish the grade plane and form a basis for calculating the volume of encroachment, the applicant shall submit this information in order to verify the accuracy of the diagram and pyramid calculation. So basically, they need to review the, what's submitted, and maybe this has already been done, I don't know. But that's what we got with the, with comments, and there are a couple more.
May I ask, Candace, email it to me, please?
Candace?
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
All right, number two, the elevations shall also be revised to indicate the overall height of the proposed addition. Number three, a Google street view of the subject property shows a shed which would require a variance as it appears to be located within the side yard of the principal building. So if there's a shed without approvals, it needs to be moved to a conforming location or removed.
There's a shed that's shown on a Google photograph, it's not depicted on the survey. The response would be that it will either be removed or moved to a conforming location.
Okay, there's a, yeah, if there's a structure, a shed without approvals, actually really should be on the survey if it's currently there. But anyway, need to be removed or moved to a conforming location. For any, let me see, any fence slash retaining wall over four feet in height requires the building permit. And five, the portion.
What that relates to?
Retaining wall?
No, no, retaining wall or existing retaining wall?
Well, I'm looking at the, at the survey and there's fencing and there is a retaining wall. So if it's over four feet high, it needs permit.
Okay.
That's all, okay. And the last comment was the portion of the fence and gate located in the right-of-way along Marie's Lane shall be removed or relocated to a conforming location and shall comply with all applicable regulations. So it looks like there is a little section here going over the property line at the very southeast corner. Does planter? Can we take a look at the survey?
I'm sorry, I was looking at the opposite direction, the lower corner is Fish Cove, not Marie Lane.
That's correct, by Fish Cove. It looks like there, actually, there's a, you know, a straight line that goes south of the property line. And I'm trying to, and I don't know, you know, exactly what structure that is. The retaining wall is, is behind it, it looks like it's a fence, but in any case.
It's, it's marked fence and then there's something that's marked planter and I'm not sure which is which, but we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah, we would just need to have whatever's over the property line moved on to the property line. So that was the last. Okay. Any other questions? Well, actually, why don't I ask, David is here waiting to be heard as well, so why don't I ask? Before I bring David, any other questions of members of the board above Richard?
I think we should hear from the neighbors.
Okay, all right, well, we could hear from the neighbor and we could hear from David. Richard, you want David to say a few words?
Hands on, wait.
I'm sorry, oh, and John, okay, very good, all right. So, Mayan, why don't, why don't we do the neighbors first, okay?
David to the east.
Okay, John's the neighbor to the east, okay, John? Okay, just need to swear you in unless you're an attorney.
I am.
You're an attorney, okay, then I'll swear you in if you just state your name and, you know, your address.
Sure, it's John Nguyen, twelve Marie Lane, Southampton, New York.
Okay.
And I am the adjoining property owner on the east side. When I got the notice with the survey from August twenty twenty, I did contact Mr. Matthew and asked him whether any of the work associated with this will involve the east side of the house. He responded to me on November twenty-first, owner advises that there will be no changes to your side of the property. But I still have questions because as it exists, the house has two exterior air conditioning units on the west side, Tom Hayden's side, which would have to be relocated and that I don't see them accounted for in this survey. And I'm just concerned that they might be moved to my side of the house, which ten feet from the property line, the applicant already has a propane generator, an AC unit, a pool filter and a pool heater, and it's, gets pretty noisy in the summer as it is. So I just want to make sure that nothing is going on the east side of the property. And just as a general observation, these are small lots and they're very narrow and the houses are built right to left across the narrow way. And an encroachment of a thousand twenty-four, a thousand three hundred and eighty-four is pretty substantial for these parcels. So that's, that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you for your comments. I wanted to ask that.
May I respond?
Um, it's up to you, you want to do.
If you don't mind, just to keep the good order. Mr. Nguyen did ask about the air conditioning units, whether they'd be moved to his side of the property. I responded they would not. The owner assured me that they would not be moved over to the east side of the property.
Oh, and also, I mean, it's, it's not before the board now, but the mention of the shed, where's. Oh, and also, I, I mean, it's, it's not before the board now, but, uh, the mention of the shed, uh, where, where's that gonna go? Because you can't leave it in its present place.
You're talking about the, John, you're talking about the shed that's not on the survey, but in the building department?
Yes, yes.
That's gonna have to be either removed or moved to a conforming location. That's what's gonna happen.
But that's not something that would be addressed tonight.
No, because they're not asking for relief to the shed.
Okay, that's fine.
If they had a, if they had a C, a CFC for the shed, that would be something different, but they don't.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So, um, Mr. and Mrs. Hayden wanted to, uh, swear you in. If you can state your names and addresses, please.
Uh, I'm Sharon Hayden and I'm at eight Marie Lane, Southampton, New York.
I'm Thomas Hayden. I'm also at eight Marie Lane, Southampton, New York.
And you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Okay, you can tell us your comments.
Uh, my comment is unchanged. I, I respectfully request of the zoning board of appeals to deny the application for the variances. I feel it's, uh, an invasion of privacy. These lots are small. It would be right next to my bedroom window. Uh, I feel that they perhaps bought the wrong house. It was recently, uh, renovated. It took a year and, uh, the owner swore that he was gonna move in and live there and it was an Airbnb. We've had parties and loud parties and it's just been a general annoyance. And, uh, these lots are undersized and perhaps he would be better served with a larger house in a different area. And despite Mr. Matthews', uh, willingness to reduce the roof by one foot and put plantings up, I'm still in opposition. That's basically all I have to say.
To, to actually jump in on my husband there, um, I don't think what the board realizes is where these properties are located. Eight, ten and twelve Marie Lane in Southampton Cove. If anybody wants to take a ride through the back part of the cove someday, you'll see the properties that lie between Marie Lane and Fish Cove Road are in a bit of a swell. So the roads are up a little higher and the homes are a little bit lower. So the way they are, they kind of, they kind of go lower as they go towards the cove. We are westerly of this house and closer to the cove. So already the structure as is, is above our, our home and tends to block that rising sun, that nice easterly sun that we get in the morning to wake us up. So even reducing that, um, pyramid by a foot, you're still, you know, towering over our home and, and blocking more of, you know, our, you know, our enjoyment of, of our home that we've been living in for more than thirty years. Um, whereas these people have been there for about two months. And unfortunately, like my husband said, I think they bought the wrong house because they move in and say, well, it's not big enough. We wanna make it bigger. And as the board can see by the applications submitted, they're asking for the entire lot coverage to go from twenty percent to almost twenty-two percent. Doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're talking about a quarter or a third of an acre, that's a lot. Um, you know, that's a significant addition onto a home. Um, as John Win was discussing, the mechanicals, the air conditioning units that currently exist, the westerly side of the house, they're asking to now push a twenty-foot setback to a nine-foot setback to our property line. And then they're gonna put the AC units, et cetera, since they've already said, as Mr. Matthew said, they won't be on the east side. So where are they gonna go? On the west side pushed out further. So now what? Is there maybe like a six-foot, four-foot setback from my property line? That tends to really encroach on my personal space. We have absolutely nothing against the owners of the house. This is just an unrealistic request for this neighborhood. Um, one of the questions in the application is, was asked, will, will the grant of the variances cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood? Uh, or will it create a detriment to nearby properties? The answer was no. The neighborhood is comprised of small substandard lots predating zoning. Um, you know, I, I beg to differ on that answer. I, I believe the answer is yes. It, it, the granting of variance would cause an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. Um, so we, we do stand by our opposition of it. Um, the house was, they, they just finished construction on it maybe a year ago. We just finally got done with listening to all the construction and now they're proposing more construction on a house that was fully renovated, you know, from a three hundred thousand dollar house to now they bought it for over a million. So it's, it's already significantly upgraded. I, I think that this is just more for the comfort level of the owner, not necessarily any kind of aesthetic. Um, and I don't think it would conform with the neighborhood. And that is, uh, all I have to say about that.
Okay. Appreciate your comments. Uh, any questions of, uh, the Hadens? Okay. If not, um, I know, uh, David Sherwood, Sherwood has been waiting to be heard. David, do you wanna, uh, just have to swear you in? Katie, state your name and address.
Uh, David Sherwood, four First Street, Side Harbor, New York.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Comments?
I'm essentially here to, to answer questions, but, um, just listening to everybody, um, I just made a few notes. Um, and actually, as I think the, um, homeowner has been watching and, uh, just sent an email and he suggested that the AC could go on the Fish Cove, um, roadside of, of things. I don't know if that's, yeah. I prob, I guess it would be on the rear, if you would, even though it's still a front yard, but it would go on the south part of the house. Um, so that it wouldn't be directly on the, on the Hadens. Um, but, um, the, I'm not, I'm not sure if, you know, if the board takes into account, you know, the, uh, the reason for the addition, but, um, you know, this, this house doesn't have, it's built on a, you know, two-foot, three-foot deep crawl space. So it doesn't have a playroom and the new owners do have kids. So, you know, the, the first floor of this addition is primarily for a playroom for the kids. You know, the, the existing first floor is nine hundred and some square feet. So you walk right into the living room. The kitchen's there and you have one bedroom and you go up the stairs and it's a standard cape with a bedroom on either side and the bathroom in the middle. Um, so there's really no interior playroom. So that's one of the reasons for the addition. Uh, the first floor of the, of the addition. The second floor of the addition is, uh, you know, be used as a, um, home office or a, you know, an extra guest bedroom. Um, one question I had for the board, and I think I may have even answered it myself because the pool being on the Fish Cove roadside, I guess, makes that the rear at, at some point in a determination. So the spot elevations for the pyramid calculations should be taken on the Marie Lane side? Is that, that correct? Cause what, what I, what the surveyor gave me, I, I use the average of the ninety-three point five on the west, the northwest side of the house and the ninety-five point nine eight on the northeast side, instead of the corners of the house and then bringing those out to the property line. So if I, if I, I just wanted to clarify that we were looking for the Marie Lane corners of the house.
You're, Dave, you're gonna confirm all that with Marge?
Okay, I talked to Marge about that. Okay.
Yeah, and, and also while you guys revising the survey, um, I think the lot coverage is not correct cause, um, I had just texted Candace. I don't, I don't think the, I think you're only supposed to, to count the roof structures. So you have a pool on there. I don't know what's going on with the concrete. I don't know if the deck is roofed. That's gonna reduce your lot coverage.
That's true. Right, yeah. Yeah, okay.
So I, I just wanna mention, we have, um, the Hadens are very unhappy, um, clearly. I'm not sure whether there's anything that can be done to address their concerns, whether there could be a line of communication about that.
Well, Mr. Hayden.
Yeah.
Can, can you, can you bring me back in?
Yeah, we, we can, we can, we can hear you.
Mr. Hayden asked me to, to offer the property for sale to my clients for a million dollars. I'm sure that would make them happy.
Nine ninety-nine.
Oh, excuse me, you're right. Ninety-nine, ninety-nine, ninety-nine.
Nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand and they can have our entire property. That's the make me move price.
There's, there's a difference between the, the gradient, the slope of your property and the slope of the Demus property. You at the, at Marie, at, uh, excuse me, Fish Cove are deeper than the property adjoining you. I noticed you, there's going up, up to the road's front.
Although it wasn't all, it wasn't always like that.
I, I'm certain of that.
The last owner raised the property.
Yeah. And the other thing I wanted to make mention of is the fact that when you're talking about the owner, you meant the prior owner.
Previous owner, yeah, who renovated the property to how it exists now.
Right, not, not my guys who didn't have a B and B and, and, and parties and whatever.
Right.
But, you know, I, I just wanna mention, you know, we, we'll, we'll take the application as presented to us and have to decide, you know, yes or no on it.
Well, we'd be glad to offer the mitigation.
I, okay, okay. Uh, but, you know, if it, if a, a line of communication, communication takes place and the, uh, parties that, that is the applicant and, and the two of you, um, and Mr. Win, or, or, or all of you can come up to some, come up with some kind of an agreement as to how to change the application in some ways uh, to make it, uh, more tolerable, tolerable or less objectionable to you. Um, that conversation could be had if you're willing to have it. If you're not willing to have it, then we'll just decide the application.
I, I've offered everything that I can think of. I'm willing to talk. I'm always willing to talk.
We were the ones who contacted you, Mr. Matthews, so we're certainly open to any kind of.
No, I, I know, I know, I know you did. May I ask that you call me again?
Certainly.
Okay, and if that conversation is gonna, gonna take place, which I'm glad to hear that the parties are willing to do that, um, then, you know, may want to put it over, uh, to see whether an agreement can be reached.
Earliest date?
Earliest date?
I know you have eleven cases on the seventh. I took notes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Candace, what do you think?
Really not a pithy issue, issue. Either we can work something out or we can't.
I understand. It's just our, our calendar that becomes a little.
No, I understand. I've been there.
You have.
Um, it's really up to you if you want to do the seventh or the twenty-first. I mean, you have eleven, you have nine. I mean.
Want to do the seventh?
I would love it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was the proposed date in time?
Jan, January seventh? All right.
Um, will we see a revised survey before then?
I, I'm gonna. And talk about what we can do before, before I can have the survey revised.
But it sounded like the board had several questions already on the survey, correct?
I, I would like to see an elevation as well. This has happened before on a property across the street on Marie Lane side, where he showed, he wanted a, a setback variance and he only showed a footprint. Next thing you know, there's a three-story house outsizing everything else in the neighborhood, which I'm still unhappy about all these years later. So, um, you know, I would like to see an elevation of.
That's not a proposal. If you wanna give me a time that we can get together on Monday, I'll come over, meet with you and bring you the elevation so I can drop them off at your house.
That's fine. That's fine. Why don't you guys discuss that? We, we don't need, uh, to be here for that discussion. I will make a motion uh, adjourn this application for all purposes to our January seventh, uh, meeting in two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, I just wanna make sure before we do that, that there's anyone else waiting?
Oh, sorry, Adam.
That, that's okay. Is there anyone else on the public who's waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Demas for, it looks like, um, ten, uh, Marie's Lane in North City? Any hands? If, if there's anyone who's waiting to be heard, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
No hands. Okay.
I'll second, I'll second Jason's motion.
Okay, very good. Mr. Han?
Hi.
Mr. Tuthill?
Hi.
Mr. Daley?
Hi.
Ms. Burgess?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Assessor?
Hi.
Mr. Botsai, thank you all for your comments this evening.
Thank you.
Thanks to the board.
Give me a call at my cell, at my office and leave you your phone number.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, board.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, item six on the agenda. Stephen Lightler, fourteen East Point Lane in Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map, nine hundred dash three forty-six dash two dash five. Applicant request relief from town code three thirty dash one fifteen C continuance for a principal front yard setback of forty-five point eight feet, where forty-nine point seven feet is existing for a proposed porch in addition to an existing dwelling. In addition, applicant request relief from the following provisions in the town code for additions to the dwelling, three thirty dash eleven residential district stable dimensional regulations for a principal front yard setback from the southerly lot line of fifty-two point three feet, where sixty feet is required.
Board has jurisdiction.
Evening, Kevin. Just have to swear in.
Kevin Springer, Dynamic Legal, sixty-one Channing Cross, Hampton Bays, New York, one one nine four six.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I certainly do.
And you can tell us about the application?
Okay, I'll try and make it quick since things seem to be dragging a little bit this evening. As Keith had mentioned, we have a non-conforming lot, um, seventeen thousand and change in an R forty zone, which was subdivided back in nineteen fifty-six. Previous zoning was, uh, C residential, which at the time, the setbacks were forty for the front and fifty for the rear. We, this came about with a, the original dwelling, we've added on to it. Uh, we kept everything in, pretty much in check, trying not to get anything except for this front yard. Which we are now, we have a porch that extends four feet out from the house, uh, obviously giving us our forty-five and change setback there. Um, I don't consider it a, a major hurdle of any stretch. I have spoken to two neighbors, um, I guess they're a, two, my brother and sister own two lots on Last Lane, which are behind us, ten and twelve Last Lane. Um, Lorraine Bigliarolo and Michael Bigliarolo, uh, they both had no objections whatsoever. Um, I do know that in the, in our neighborhood alone, there are several, uh, dwellings alone that actually are much closer. We have one at thirty-four feet setback just for the dwelling, one at thirty-six, another one at forty-one, another one at forty-five. So as far as the character of the neighborhood, I don't think it's going to affect that at all. Um, the design, as you have, have been submitted to you guys, is very nice. It certainly brings up the neighborhood a little bit more. And as far as the, the rear setback, which is the fifty-two, three, that hasn't changed. That's been, um, that has been there since a, an addition back actually in nineteen ninety-five. It hasn't even changed. So we haven't touched the rear at all. So basically that is, unless anybody has any questions. I'm here.
Well, I think it's a pretty modest application.
I agree.
No flogging tonight.
No flogging.
Yeah.
Look at, look at, we really actually, we, we, the house is pretty much done except for this porch.
However, we do have building department comments, so I don't.
Okay, go right ahead. I didn't.
Yeah, we, we pinned a lot of them for this, uh, meeting for some reason. Okay, so this is from Marjorie Riley, uh, building inspector. And here's what she told us. Survey shall be revised to correctly indicate the name of the road along the southerly lot line as indicated in the Suffolk County Tax Map Book. Name of the road is Last Lane, C attached copy of the tax map. So apparently it's supposed to be Last Lane.
That is correct. That's the way it shows.
Oh, really? Okay, good.
Not on the survey, but that is, that is, that is the actual name of the, of the road, yes.
Okay, good, good. All right. Number two, there were two additions done to the dwelling. CC number eight zero four three nine two dated February tenth nineteen eighty-seven and CC number eight one two eight nine five dated February twenty-eighth nineteen ninety-five. And it appears that variance relief should have been applied for at the time of these additions since the southerly lot line is a street. As such, to make the town records clear, variance relief as indicated in the advertisement is required. And three, the framed shed. And three, the frame shed on the survey does not benefit of, from a, uh, certificate or building permit. As such, this shed shall be removed as there does not appear to be a conforming location for it. If the applicant chooses to keep the shed, then relief from the following provisions of the town code will be required. Three thirty eleven residential district table of dimensional regulations for an accessory distance from street setback, front yard. And thirty-three, three thirty eleven for an accessory side yard setback and three thirty eighty-four D pyramid height. In addition, an additional ZBA filing to legalize the location of the shed will be required.
Okay, uh, well, let's go back to, uh, we'll go back to the fifty-two-three for the two additions. I had mentioned that earlier. That obviously has not changed and it is, it was a little bit, it changed a little bit in the ninety-six edition, which left it at fifty-two-three. Now, on the old survey, it actually says fifty-two-two. It's an inch, I guess. Uh, I did just receive a new survey today from Fox, um, showing the frame shed to be removed. Uh, unfortunately, that this survey, as I'm noting here, is also just noting that it's a right-of-way and still does not mention it as last lane. So we're gonna have to, I'm gonna have to get that fixed again. Um, so I will have them adjust that. But as of now, I do have a survey showing that the shed is to be removed.
Okay, okay. All right, so that's fine. All right, um, any other questions of members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who's waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Lankler, the property located at fourteen East Point Lane in Hampton Bays? If you're waiting to be heard, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
Okay, if not, beef is yours.
Seeing and hearing no one, Kevin, you take care of what you gotta take care of, please?
I will, sir.
All right, it's last lane. Don't forget.
Yep.
And with that, I'll, uh, motion to close with a determination, really an open for written submissions with a determination on, um, what's it, the seventeenth?
No.
Of this month?
No. No, we, we've ended up in for thirty days.
Until January fourth, um, for written subs and then the decision would be, well, it could be January seventh, I suppose, or it could be the seventeenth. That's, I'm, I'm sorry, it's the seventh or the twenty-first.
All right. Written subs to what?
The fourth, January fourth.
One-four with a determination on, what'd you say, one-seven?
Could be one-seven.
That's, that's my motion.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess? Ms. Burgess?
We, we lost Helen. She's gonna, she's gonna try to get back on.
Okay, no problem. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa?
Aye.
Thank you so much, Kevin.
All right, can confirm we have subs the fourth and decision is when?
Seventh.
Seven.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have, uh, item seven on the agenda is a modification request. One ninety-two Hampton Bays Realty LLC, one ninety-two West Montauk Highway in Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash two two one dash three dash seventeen. On April eighteen, twenty nineteen, by decision number D zero one nine zero four seven, this board grant the variances in connection with a proposed, proposed convenience store as accessory to a proposed gasoline filling station by letter dated October twenty-six, twenty twenty. Ronald K. Architect for the applicant is requesting that the decision be modified to address most changes.
Usually numbers. Happy as can be.
Somebody needs to mute themselves.
Kevin, mute yourself.
To the interior floor plan, the convenience store as well as site plan.
Board has jurisdiction. I think we're also looking for Mark, maybe Palat, Palata?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, all right, so, uh, Ronald, would you like to go first?
Yes, uh, Ronald Quaple, architect, twenty-four New Irving Avenue, Babylon, New York, one one seven oh two.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes.
Okay, you can, uh, tell us about this application, which is.
Okay, so, um, basically, the, because of COVID, the owner decided to change the floor plan around because he has, similar to this, he had one store similar to this that was, did really well during the pandemic, so he decided to make things, changes to it to reflect the, you know, with these stores that did better during COVID, so he wanted to make, change the floor plan that was approved and go this route with this floor plan. It, it's, the square footage of the building has not changed at all. Still the same square footage. It's just the percentages of the square, of the inside have changed. You know, a little bit bigger here, um, smaller sales area, bigger walk-in, um, refrigerator. They added an office. And, um, yeah, we changed the site around a little too. We eliminated two, two filling stations so we can get the trucks in wider and just land bank uh, some, uh, spots so we could, um, you know, don't have to put those in and keep the area more natural.
Okay, and the various relief previously granted, does that remain the same?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just a matter of, of referencing the new, uh, the new plans?
Right, it's just that, yeah, because I went to Claire at site planning and, and planning board and she says you need to go back to the ZBA first to get the change of the square footage on the inside and eliminating two filling stations and before you can come back to us to get re-approved, so.
The square footage of the convenience store hasn't changed at all?
No.
Still one thousand.
Excuse me?
It's still one thousand four hundred and fifteen.
Uh, wouldn't that, yeah, although the first floor is, is fifteen, is, uh, two thousand square foot, the second floor is one thousand five hun, uh, five hundred and forty-five square feet.
No, but our, our analysis was that there was one thousand four hundred and fifteen square feet dedicated to the retail sale.
Right, now that's a hun, now that's, um, we dropped it down a hundred and twenty-three square feet, so now it's one thousand two hundred and ninety-two square feet for retail sales area. So we actually have less retail sales area.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other questions of members of the board? I know there was, uh, um, I believe, uh, yes, uh, uh, you're also waiting to be heard, um, the, the gentleman who's, uh, I can see, but I can't hear. All right, so anyone, we can, there we go. Okay, sir, just wanted to swear you in. If you can state your name and address unless you're.
I, I'm, I'm the engineer with the applicant. I'm with Ron, so.
Okay, okay, well, you, you, you don't have to give, give comments, but if you'd like to, you can.
No, it's just I'm here to answer any questions from the board.
Okay, no problem. Um, do we have any questions of the engineer?
No.
I have none.
Okay, all right, all right, um. So I think we're, I think we're good. I don't think we have any questions at this point. Um, so, um, want to ask if there is anyone else on the public who's waiting to be heard in connection with the application um, of, um, one ninety-two Hampton Bays Realty LLC for one nine, nine-two West Montauk Highway in Hampton Bays. If there is anyone who's waiting to be heard, uh, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
I see no hands.
Okay, if not, I would move that we close the application this evening except for written submissions. Written submissions per our, um, how we're handling all of them, um, or in connection with all applications are going to be until January fourth twenty twenty-one, and we will have a decision, I will have a decision ready at our January seventh meeting.
Second.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. DeSessa?
Aye.
Chair of the House, I, uh, thank you for your, uh, uh, comments. Have a great, uh, evening. Have a great holiday.
Thank you. Take care. Bye-bye.
Item on the agenda is two twenty-five Butter Lane LLC and two fifty-one Butter Lane LLC in Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash fifty-two dash one dash thirty-six. Applicant request for we, the following.
Nope, you don't have to read this. This is the continuation.
Yeah, right.
So, Brian, DeSessa, I'm recusing myself. Okay. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening, members of the board. Brian Locasso, Adam Miller Group, two four six two Main Street, two seven Bridgehampton, attorney for the applicant. Um, I was before you on October fifteenth for a four-lot subdivision, um, due to the fact this lot was unlisted. In the secret, we had to get a secret determination, which was, um, coordinated through Anthony Trez at the planning board. So I have nothing further to add. I don't know if the board has any further questions.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to add for the board, um, that, you know, there was some discussion between the applicant and Anthony Trez and I about, you know, how to proceed with SECR. Anthony Trez recommended an uncoordinated review, um, and he did prepare for us. His recommendation was a negative declaration, um, which we can incorporate into, um, our decision on this. So that was, that was also the update on SECR.
Okay.
Right, thank you.
And I think we went through the rest of it with, with the subdivision application, um, that is before the planning board and the, you know, what I considered to be pretty modest relief. Uh, the only thing I think we talked about was the flagpole being, uh, ten, ten point zero one, uh, versus twenty. My guess is probably, you spoke about that briefly, maybe.
Yeah, and there is, as shown on the site plan, we are still dedicating a twenty-foot wide access easement, so we're still granting a twenty-foot access path that just minimized the amount of relief we needed by doing via an easement rather than a twenty-foot flagpole and ask for additional relief for on the front lots.
Okay. All right, any other questions of members of the board? Is there anyone who's waiting to be heard this evening in connection with the application of six twenty-five Butter Lane LLC and two fifty-one Butter Lane LLC for two twenty-five Butter, uh, two twenty-five and two fifty-one Butter Lane in Bridgehampton? If you are waiting to be heard, this would be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands.
Okay, if not, uh, Mike, it is yours.
Okay, um, so we will close this. Uh, are we expecting any other written submissions? I don't believe so, right?
No.
Not expecting any, but we're keeping it open.
We keep it open for written submissions until, I'm sorry, the dates. January fourth.
Yep.
With a decision on the January seventeenth meeting.
Seven. Well, it would be the seventh meeting or the twenty-first?
Shoot for the seventh.
Shoot for the seventh, okay. Uh, open for written until January fourth with a decision on the January seventh meeting.
Second.
Okay, uh, Mr. Daley?
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill?
Aye.
Mr. Han?
Aye.
Ms. Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Daley?
Aye, again.
Again, okay, no, who am I forgetting? Mr. DeSessa's recused. Oh, and, and Chair of the House. Okay, all right, all right, um, Brian, do you, you have any more or are you?
No, that's it. Have a good evening. Happy holidays, happy new year. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Take care. Take care.
Item on the agenda is Susan and Matt Daimler, who are three no road and should have got kills. Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash three, uh, two thirty-two dash three, there's seven point five and seven point six. This is held over from our eleven-five meeting.
Kevin? Is it me? Am I on?
I believe you're on, yes. Hi, unless you're an attorney, you have to swear you in.
Oh, I'm Pamela Glazer. I live at fifty-four Eastway Drive, Southampton, New York.
Okay.
Um, architect and agent for Susan and Matt Domler.
Okay, and if I previously swore, swore you in, I don't need to swear you in again. Okay, thank you. So if you cannot give us an update?
Okay, so the update is that I did two, two additional options. I, um, to, uh, the coverage for the rear yard. And, um, option one, um, I've moved the house and accessory garage further to the north.
Hold on, okay, good. I just wanted to make sure Keith muted himself.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, so in both ca, in both options, I have moved the main residence and the accessory garage to the north. And I have reduced the size of the tennis court and moved it as far north as possible. So I've reduced the amount of coverage to the rear yard. And, um, in the first case, I've left the garage, um, at the, as the, um, the larger garage, which was a three-car garage. And in that particular case, the rear yard coverage is now reduced to thirty-five percent from the previous requested forty-six point four eight percent. Um, and that is, and that is this case. The, um, yellow area is the rear yard and the orange represents our lot coverage.
Yeah.
Could you say those numbers again?
Yes, the, um, total rear yard is six thousand eight hundred and forty-eight and the, um, lot coverage is now thirty-five percent of that rear yard.
Yes, and let me just make clear from the last public hearing, at the last public hearing, a majority of this board said we did not believe a tennis court could fit on this lot because the lot was too small. So you're proposing a smaller tennis court, but still at thirty-five percent rear yard lot coverage.
Yes, and then I did an additional, um, option, which would be option two, where I, I reduced the size of the garage. And that total percentage of the rear yard now is at thirty-two percent.
They really want their tennis court, apparently.
They really want their tennis court.
I'm not sure if they're gonna get their tennis court, but, but I understand they want it.
This is not acceptable to me.
But in this particular case, we're, we're pretty much, much more reduced in our rear yard, um, at thirty-two percent, so.
I can't quite make out the survey. I'm on my phone here. Can you move the tennis court any further north without incurring a need for additional variance towards Montauk Highway? Can you move?
Not yet. We do not need additional variance towards Montauk High. We are now at the fifty-foot setback, so we do not.
You're right at, you're right at the border, okay.
And, um, there was a question previously about the pyramid on the garage, but since we shifted all of the house and the garage further north, we no longer have any pyramid issues, which were in question.
How many cars fit in the garage now?
Two.
The reduced size, the two?
Reduced size, yes.
Okay.
Um, the larger one was really to have some room. He, he, he sort of likes to work on his old cars, so he, the larger one really wasn't to park so many old cars. It was just to have space to do.
And the percentage between the house and the garage?
The percentage between the house and the garage at this point is the, the garage is thirty-three percent of the house.
Mm-hmm.
So it's the thirty, thirty, uh, my note was thirty-two percent rear yard lot coverage?
Yes.
Use garage and reduce tennis court?
Yes.
What's the size of the tennis court now?
A hundred and ten by fifty-five.
Well, I mean, I, I think everybody has to remember, we had the neighbors complaining.
Not about the tennis court, though.
Pardon me?
They were not complaining about the tennis court. They were complaining about the forty-foot setback of the garage. Which actually no one else had a problem with, only the neighbors. They did, they said they didn't care about the tennis court. So, I mean, there, this, those people live across the street on the Knoll side. They probably would, they wouldn't see the tennis court, but.
But there's pe, there's people whose ha, house is very close to the tennis court.
On to the west. It's somewhat close. To the south, it's not close.
And they may be waiting to be heard right now, so we don't know.
They may be.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, that I can't answer, but they may be.
Yeah, okay. So in my view, the question, I, I think option number one, I don't think is gonna go, but if it's option number two, at thirty-two percent rear yard lot coverage, the question is whether, uh, you know, we as a board want to do that. Um, I mean, I think we made about as clear as we could that we felt the lot was too small for a tennis court the last time. But the applicant wants the tennis court?
They do, and the house is very, the house is very small, so, you know, I, I think that was the, uh, you know, the thing. They just, you know, they didn't do a large house so that they wouldn't have a lot of lot coverage in terms of the property with the house, but the the tennis court obviously is large, but, but will be well-planted out and probably not visible from anybody except.
Could you say that again?
The, the tennis court will be well-planted out, um, in the perimeter, so I don't, I don't believe it will be seen from anywhere, and at the moment, it's very, the site is very well-planted already from. the site is very well planted already from Montalk Highway and will, will additionally be.
Do, do we do screening? So, so you'd be willing to condition it on?
Yes, we could, we would definitely be, be willing to condition it with screening, with, with evergreen screening, with the all year screening. That, that is not.
Right, and I appreciate the fact that, that all this effort's coming to me, okay. I also appreciate the fact that we went from forty-six percent, forty-six point four percent, to now we're talking about thirty-two percent. That is a big drop. I do appreciate that. But I don't know whether you have four votes or not, and I myself am not a hundred percent sure.
Well, we need, we need to be, have some tennis enthusiasts here, especially in this pandemic, to have outside sports, I think is a wonderful addition. So I mean it, you know, you, you might be gaining a new appreciation for that and that you, you spend so much time indoors these days, but.
Um, I'm not, not in favor of, I'm not in favor of this application.
And of course, I'm not.
Keith, uh, you have to. Keith, we can't hear you.
He did.
Hold on. Okay, we can hear you now.
My recommendation was join a tennis club.
Yeah.
I couldn't hear you, Keith.
Join a tennis club.
Oh, I agree.
All right.
I like that one, Keith.
I, I'm not sure why there's so much, um, adversarial positions to tennis courts.
It's not about the tennis court, ma'am. It's about the lot coverage, which is, uh, which is uh, significantly higher than any of us are comfortable with, um, and we're just not going to approve that much lot coverage. That's what zoning is for, uh, it's to protect a neighborhood from something like this. It's just not appropriate.
Well, I, I think it, it's nicer to have a tennis court than it is an enormous, enormous house on a small lot, which there seems to be quite, quite a few of, but.
You're entitled to your opinion.
Yes.
And be, and before I say anything one way or another, I want to see if the neighbors. Okay, um, first of all, any other questions of members of the board or, or Katie for, for Pam?
No.
No, okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of, uh, Daimler or probably mispronouncing it, for, uh, three Noel Road and Schittcock Hills? If you would like to be heard, this will be the time to let us know by raising your hand.
No hands. Okay, Adam, tell us what you think. No hands, go ahead.
Adam, I'll make it easy for you. I'm joining the nose, so. Sorry. I come from a tennis family, so it's, it's not the sport.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, so Pam, now, now my question to you is, you know, do you want to go back again and see if there's anything else to be done other than a tennis court on this lot?
Well, I, I guess my question is, you know, if we went to just a sports court, which would be a smaller court, um, is there even, even a possibility? I don't want to keep coming back and then, you know, making it smaller and smaller, and then you say, listen, we don't want a court at all.
Right, right. I mean, I, I think, I think you're, i- if you're in like the twenty-five, I don't know, twenty-seven percent range as opposed to thirty-two percent, I think that would make a big difference.
Yeah.
But I'm just speaking for myself. Yeah, so I can't, we can't guarantee, but we're within the twenties, we're, we're, we're better.
Yeah, but I, but you know, I'm, I'm willing to, to, to try and do smaller, um.
I'd be comfortable in the high twenties as well.
Would you say it was at thirty-two or thirty?
Thirty-two at this point, I mean.
All right, yeah, if you get it, if you get it down another five percent, you have my support.
I, I just think, I don't think this board has ever, I mean, the lot is basically comprised of two tax maps that equal a half an acre. And I can't recall ever approving a tennis court on a half acre lot.
Okay.
Right.
I agree.
Whereas pools, you might, you.
Correct.
So in other accessory structure.
Correct, correct.
But they probably have a pool over a thirty-two acre drive, right?
They have a, they have a pool. This was really.
Yeah, they live around the corner.
They do. This is really for the parents.
I, I've been to see the property many, many, many times.
So the thirty-two Aqua?
A, and, and the. Yes, yes.
I, I personally used to live across the street, so I know it very well myself.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, my next question.
We have a, a decision for our next hearing.
No, no, we, we, you, you, and you wanna, you wanna come back again, right?
I, I, I always want to come back. I'm sorry.
Our only problem is our, our calendar.
Yes, I, I see.
January is getting pretty packed at this point. And almost every application's been adjourned tonight, which is very unusual.
Well, you guys need to do, you know, positive decisions.
Yeah.
Well, we, if we took a, a, a vote now, yeah, we have a positive decision.
No, not, not type of positive decision. Not type of positive decision.
Listen, it's ten pounds, five pound bag, they want what they want.
I know, everybody wants.
Either come up, either come up with it or forget it, you know?
Okay, all right. So Candace, do we have any room left in January at all?
Hi, Candace.
Hey. Hi, Pam. Um.
What do you think?
It's Candace. Hey Candace, how are you?
Oh, she's never on the camera.
I'm usually typing on another screen. Um, I mean, you have nine on January twenty-first. I would, January seventh is no good.
Okay.
January first.
I'll take on ninth tonight, so I guess that's.
Okay. All right.
And if we don't have that first one, which is so, was really long today. It shouldn't be so bad.
Okay, all right, um, so Helen, uh, this application is yours.
Yeah, well, we're journeying to see if our number can get further reduced to January twenty-first.
All right, twenty-seven is the lucky number. I can feel it. I feel it.
Or lower, or lower.
For some reason, you don't feel you can.
Twenty-nine.
Your application.
Okay, all right, so that's the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Han.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Todd Hill.
Aye.
Mrs. Sessa.
Aye.
Cheerboza, thanks so much, Pam.
Thank you.
Great holiday.
Yes.
Anyway, item, item ten on the agenda is Flying Point Sands LLC. Eleven thirty-four, eleven thirty-one Flying Point Road, Watermill, Suffolk County Tax Map nine hundred dash one seventy-eight dash two dash fourteen. This is held over for our eleven five meeting. Eleven nineteen meeting. Good to go, Adam.
Okay.
Looking for Carl Benicasa and Aaron.
Okay, very good. Well, uh, good evening, Carl.
Good evening. Good to see you all.
You as well. You can, uh, give us an update.
This is held over from our last meeting. Um, as you recall, we're requesting relief, uh, from two provisions. Uh, one thirty-eight seventeen C and three thirty forty-six point two coastal erosion hazard area, hazard zone, and from the crest of dune setback. From our last meeting, it was clear there were some questions from the board about the impacts this development would have. Again, I'll remind you, there is an existing home that is roughly nineteen feet from the crest of dune, and we're proposing a, a home that's fifty-four feet from the crest of dune. Uh, Arum is here tonight from First Coastal to, uh, more expertly detail, uh, exactly why this proposed development does not pose, uh, any danger to the structure or to the dune itself. So I will turn it over to Arum.
Okay.
All right, morning, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, uh, you can state your name and address.
I'm third junior, First Coastal Corporation, West Hampton, New York, on behalf of the applicant.
And you, you had to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I so swear.
Thank you. You can, uh, give us your comments on this application.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna take over your Zoom screen again, um. Bear with me two seconds. Okay. I, I was asked, uh, to, uh, to review the application that's in front of you and to, uh, offer my opinion and my suggestions um, on the redevelopment of this site. Um, so I kind of went, uh, back to the beginning on this one. Here's a aerial photo. This is a couple of years old. This is our site at eleven thirty-one Flying Point Road. Me Cox inlet to the, to the east, Me Cox Bay to the north, the Atlantic Ocean to the south. This was the redevelopment plan that, um, I was, I was given. Uh, this is the outline of the old house right here. And the dark, darker gray is the newer house, and the setback, uh, was fifty-four feet from the present crest of the dune. So, uh, in, in summary, I'm gonna tell you, you know, what my opinion is, and then I'm gonna walk through why I have that opinion. Uh, so in summary, I think this is a good application that the board should approve it. And the reason is that, that the home, the new home is actually gonna be completely north or landward of the landward toe of the dune. So therefore, it really complies with the intent of both the coastal erosion hazard area and the Crest of the Dune regulations. Second piece is this dune's gonna be substantially enhanced through the restoration of sand and beach grass on both the north and the south sides of the dune. Interestingly, the, the requested variance on this parcel actually places the house farther north than the neighbor at eleven forty-one Flying Point Road, which was a variance granted in twenty twelve by this board. Thus, it is really more compliant with the intent that coastal erosion and the crest of dunes numbers notwithstanding. We'll get into that in a little bit. This area did suffer an anomalous erosion event through a hotspot in twenty eighteen, but the beach itself has recovered and the dune is recovering, and the applicant has active permits to restore the dune seaward approximately sixty feet. Overall, the health of this beach is excellent as a result of the beach restoration project through the Beach Erosion Control District, as well as the ongoing management of Me Cox Cut by the Southampton Town Trustees and active restoration of the dune by property owners, not just this property owner, but other property owners in the area. So I, I kind of went back to the beginning and said, what's the whole purpose? The Coastal Erosion Act and the Crest of Dune setback is to protect the dune. And they accomplish this purpose by establishing standards that are intended to identify in some way, shape, or form where the dune begins and ends. In the landward side of the dune, which we call the landward toe of the dune, the coastal erosion line is actually a line that's drawn, uh, on an aerial photograph that's twenty-five feet landward of the landward toe of the dune. And they do that to provide a degree of buffer between the dune and activities. But interestingly, the width of the line on the coastal erosion map is actually eight feet wide. So you have, you, you have a twenty-five foot buffer and you have another eight feet of, of flex in, uh, in the line itself. Moreover, this was done in nineteen eighty, th, these maps were completed in nineteen eighty-eight, but they're based upon aerial photos taken in nineteen eighty-three. So if you ever look at an actual coastal erosion map, the, all that information is in the, in the lower right-hand corner. So the crest of dune, wha, what's the crest of dune? The crest of dune is really an arbitrary distance of a hundred and twenty-five feet. That's that's designed to encompass the landward side of the dune so that you don't encroach into the dune. There's nothing sacrosanct about that number. It's a standard. But it is in fact arbitrary. Uh, obviously, uh, the landward toe of the dune could be farther or closer than the hundred and twenty-five feet. It's, uh, the hundred and twenty-five feet is just a good standard to use. It served the town well, and it, it's something to be, uh, respected and observed. Um, but then, you know, the town code itself, uh, even allows a, an automatic twenty-five foot variance in that crest of the dune setback in certain circumstances determined by the building inspector. But really, let's get to the heart of the matter. The heart of the matter is, we're trying to protect the mass of the dune. And so if you, if you dive deep into one thirty-eight twelve, you find this phrase, which is the key to maintaining a stable dune system, is the establishment and maintenance of beach grass or other native vegetation on the dunes and the assurance of a supply of sand to the dunes. Okay, because that's what we're trying to do. So now I'm gonna show you how I think this project does that. So first thing is, we gotta really figure out where the landward toe of the dune is, and we do this using three basic tools. Site topography, the coastal erosion maps, and other official documents like the federal, the FEMA flood insurance rate map. All right, how do we do that? Well, this is what the coastal erosion map actually looks like. And you can see, here's our project site. And you can see the coastal erosion line runs right along the back uh, of the existing house. Now, interestingly, you notice that this line is really pretty straight. It's got a small bend here, and that's about it. Well, why? Because the mapping standards for the coastal erosion line are, don't, don't catch all the little crenulations of the landward toe of the dune. This is statewide mapping project. Leave that up to the locals. If there's a question, let them look at the line and determine whether or not the dune is being protected. And that's the whole purpose of coastal erosion and of this variance proceeding is to look at the details. The second thing I want to show you, this is called a FEMA work map. Now, most people would never see this. It's very colorful. You have to admit that. Um, this is the actual map that, that's created by the digital floodplain models. And what FEMA does, uh, FEMA ha, has to determine the location of the primary frontal dune. But it's circled right here. This is a very important aspect of FEMA because the primary frontal dune, they want to have that protected so that, that flooding and erosion is lessened. And the, the, the notion of the primary frontal dune is this black and white line right here. Now, if you have incredible vision, better than even mine, the house is, the existing house is located right in here somewhere. Very hard to see, but here's what's really important. FEMA uses that primary front, frontal dune to determine where the break is between a V-zone, a VE velocity zone, which is this area here seaward, and the AE zone, which is this area here, which has still water flooding. And that, that primary frontal dune is the landward toe of the dune. So FEMA actually makes the division between wave action and still water based upon the landward toe of the dune. And that is the white line right here. And again, with a really good vision, you can see the existing house is underneath that line. Okay, great, thank you. What's next? Well, here's what's next. That, that line gets placed upon a survey by squires, and when we look at this, we realize here is the division between the V-zone to the south and the A-zone to the north. In other words, this dash line is what FEMA determined in their mapping in two thousand nine, which is done through a process called LiDAR, which is, uh, is a, a laser-based light detection and ranging. They determined that this red dash line is the division between the V-zone and the A-zone, which is the primary frontal dune, which is the landward toe of the dune. And you can see the new residence is proposed entirely landward of that line. Okay. Next, well, what's the topography on the light, on the site show? Well, the topography shows a little bit different story. Again, we see this line here, which is, this is running right around between elevations ten and twelve, very parallel. And then this is the crenulation I'm talking about. And actually, the landward toe of the dune on this part of the property is all the way out here. But even on the eastern part of the property, the house is still landward of the topographic landward toe of the dune. I think this is really important because it tells us that the, the new home will be completely outside of the dune. But that's really only a portion of the story because once that house that's on the dune now is removed, the thing that's gonna go with it is the garage. And it turns out that not, the house may sit on top of the dune, but the garage sits in the dune. So in other words, instead of be, having a backside of the dune filled with sand, it's actually filled with a void of air, the garage. And that amounts to about a hundred and sixty-eight cubic yards, uh, of dune and about two thousand square feet of coverage. So it's really only half a dune, and I'll show you in a, uh, just a quick illustration what I mean. So the existing house sits right in the backside of the dune, and because it has a lower level garage, the whole backside of the dune doesn't exist. But when this house is removed and the new house built landward outside of the dune, this whole area is gonna be restored, so the dune is gonna be enhanced. Next part of it has to do with the seaward side of the dune, and the, the approvals are in place uh, from all of the required agencies to rebuild this dune seaward about sixty feet. And that's almost eight thousand square feet of native beach grass to be planted. And this is what the, the plan calls for. Uh, so in it, in addition to the fifty-four feet of, of setback in the new house, there's actually gonna be an additional sixty feet of dune for combined total of about a hundred and fourteen linear feet. Just to sum up, the key, as explained in the code, is a stable mass of sand covered in beach grass. Well, we're going to do exactly that here. This is a, a twenty thirteen aerial. You can see here's eleven forty-one under construction with their ninety-five foot setback. This is the approximate location of the new home. It's about a hundred and seventeen feet back from where that dune was in two thousand thirteen. But the dune isn't there now, we know that. But that decision at eleven forty-one by this board was a good decision because what happened? We had this anomalous erosion in twenty eighteen. It erased about fifty or sixty feet of dune. You can see the water line coming right across here. And, but guess what? The dune survived. The dune did its job because the house was moved back out of the dune. So this stands as an excellent decision by the board because the dune was preserved. It functioned as intended and property and resources and life were protected. So what's happened since then? And what's going to happen in the future? Well, I can't tell you everything that's going to happen in the future, but here we are in twenty nineteen. We have a very wide recovered beach. You can see it's very linear across here. And that all of the neighbors are working together to put in sand fence. And they're going to reinstall the dune right in this area here and back in line with the rest of the dunes on the adjacent properties. You know, I should point out that, that, go back to here for a second. This whole erosion of this area was a very anomalous erosional hotspot. These things happen along the beach and then once, but the good news is they're quite transient. And then the beach recovers in the way that you're seeing in this photo that's only about a year or so later. So what's going to, what's, what's going to happen in the future on this beach? Well, here you're looking at the twenty thirteen beach restoration project and our location is right up here at the end of Flying Point Road. This is a two and a half million cubic yard project that is nourishing sand into this entire system. So there is a slug of sand that is going to be moving its way westward in natural latoral transport to feed sand into this beach and dune system. So in summary, I think this is a good project that the board can approve. The home is coming completely out of the dune. I think I demonstrated that quite well. The dune is being enhanced on both sides with an addition of sand and beach grass, which is exactly what the code tells us to do. The, the house is moving back farther than the adjacent property at eleven forty-one, so it's actually more compliant. And the beach has already recovered from this anomalous erosion event. But there is a plan obviously to restore the dune system because they take a little longer and can use a little more help from, from us. And overall, the health of this beach is excellent, notwithstanding this anomalous erosion. And that's through the efforts of the town-sponsored BECD, the trustees-sponsored management of the cut and the, and the owner sponsors restoration of their dune. That, that, that sums up my presentation. Happy to take questions, questions. Thank you.
So just a comment. I appreciate your presentation, Aram. It was very thorough. I do believe that nevertheless, there are concerns from some members of this board who spoke at the last hearing about the relief that's being requested from the Crest of the Dune. I understand that sometimes you can't comply with the, with the hundred and twenty-five feet. Sometimes it's impossible to do so. But, you know, the other members of the board and myself will certainly consider the information you just provided.
Well, as I see it, I mean, this is an oceanfront lot in Watermill. It's never going to be vacant again. This is a very valuable piece of property. We've got the choice of either letting the current house remain. I mean, it's not going to get torn down if they can't build another house. Then the current house remain that's built inside the dune. Or let them build a maybe slightly larger house, thirty-five feet further back from the ocean with an upgraded septic system and they can restore the dune. And like you said, they can remove that void that the current house leaves in the dune itself. As, as I see it, I think it's a big improvement. I mean, you're never going to get that hundred and twenty-five feet. If, if we, if we say no as a board, that old house is going to remain. They're not going to say, all right, let's, let's knock it down and make it, make it land again. I mean, we're either left with the old house or some version of this new house. I don't know if there's any way, Carl, for you to move it back like a couple more feet? Is that possible? Or are they back about as far back as they can push it?
That also was a recommendation from Janice.
Yeah, we saw Janice's recommendation. The lot is pretty, pretty maxed out as we discussed last time. The pool structure exists, as you know, and that was constructed with about ten feet. Well, as, as north, it was constructed as north as possible, given the, the location of septic. So it is rather constrained. And we, you know, in light of Aram's testimony, we think that the current placement is certainly, is certainly acceptable and certainly respectful of the dune. Again, as, as Aram astutely put it, these numbers that we're dealing with are arbitrary. They are, they're created to govern an entire town's beachfront and certainly don't take into account the unique features of each dune on each property. The overall goal is to protect the house and protect the dune. You do that by demonstrating that the home is not interfering with the structure of the dune from the toe of the dune all the way to the seaward side of the dune. And as Aram demonstrated, this, this home doesn't touch it at all. The current one is quite a threat to the dune. And removing it in place of the proposed home is, does, and does numerous benefits for, for the dune itself. It takes away a structure that's actually getting into the dune and replaces it with, with earth that, with the earth that it stabilized the dune, with plants that stabilize, that stabilize the dune. We will be doing a great benefit to the dune. We will be working sort of in, in the spirit of this law with this proposal. I think the home is placed appropriately where it is. Now, I understand Cornelius, we, this is a, this is a give and take. And I do think that there is some room for compromise here. I know Janice recommended or mentioned ten feet in her, in her report to the, to the, to the board. But she also noted that it is her understanding that this dune restoration project is in effect and could impact this property and the beachfront. And in that case, that there doesn't need to be any further retreat. And she didn't even say that there has to be ten feet further, ten feet retreat. She noted that there could be. So I think there is room for compromise. I don't know that the ten feet is actually required or even necessary to comport with really the wording of this law, the intent of the statute. We would be willing to compromise some though, in the spirit of getting this done. And I think five feet would be, would be, would be reasonable from my client's perspective and from the board's, from the board's responsibilities.
And I speaking for myself, I would be comfortable with that. If you, with the five feet compromise, I'd be comfortable. Whether or not there's three other people that agree, we'll see.
I'm comfortable with it.
I think the other issue, Carl, was the size of the house and the pyramid. I think that the, I felt that the size of the house was, was oversized.
There's no pyramid, yeah, there's no pyramid concerns.
There is no pyramid, okay.
No, there, there, Mike, there was an issue. There was, there was testimony about whether or not the height complied and, and Carl was able to resubmit plans. Did we hear back from Dennis Carl? I know that, I know that.
We haven't yet. We, we saw Dennis's first comments. I know that our architect did meet with Dennis and provided full-size plans and seemed to alleviate his concerns. I don't know that we have his response yet. But I'm sure it'll come during written comment.
Carl, do you have anything in writing in, in response to the letter from Marty? The one that's dated November twelfth? Did you put anything in writing?
Response to the letter from Marty Shay?
Yeah. Which he doesn't, and which he expresses his displeasure about this project.
I don't know that I've seen that letter, to be honest.
You never, you never saw that letter?
Was that presented to us?
It's in our file.
I don't, I don't know if it was presented to you. It's, you know, it's Marty's referral. It's basically Marty's referral report.
I don't know that there's any wetlands impact. And in fact, we have an application before the environmental board for a letter of non-jurisdiction.
Yeah, no, it's, it's more for the coastal, the, you know, the coastals, the coastals go to Marty as well. Typically, you know, typically we hear back from the coastal erosion hazard administrator, but periodically we'll get something from Marty as well.
Okay.
Maybe we should get a copy of that to, to Carl?
Yeah, sure. I mean, it's, you know, it, you know, Marty, Marty's recommendation is that, you know, they haven't, they haven't demonstrated that it's the minimum necessary. It's, you know, it's, that's, that's pretty much it. I mean, he has like nine points to it, but he's basically saying explore practicable alternatives.
As five feet retreat would be a practical alternative.
I don't know if he would say that. If you did a response to this and then gave it to him and he would say, oh, you, you make me happy or you don't make me happy. I mean, I would like to see that.
Well, Helen, Marty's opinion is not dispositive here.
No, but it's, for me, it's informative.
Sure. I think, but I think the testimony from Aram demonstrates a far, probably far, far more thorough analysis of what we're dealing with here.
Well, except that it's not an unbiased opinion from Aram. He's part of your team. Marty is not part of your team. He speaks for the town. So for me, his opinion is very important.
Understood.
There's a balance.
Right, right. So Carl, I mean, Helen suggesting that you prepare a response, a written response?
Yes, I would like to see that.
Yeah.
Can we do that during written comment?
You absolutely can.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, so. Yeah, I understand that this is a difficult application for, for this board. But I just see the, as Cornelius said, the benefits outweigh the, what would happen if we deny? If we deny, then that house remains, they're sitting on the dune. And I think that's a problem. And if I know there was an option of being able to get a house, the, the new house, a hundred feet, let's say, that would be much more, much preferable, but it's just not realistic based on what the size and, and what's going on with this particular lot. So, you know, we want maximum.
I'm with you, Cornelius Adam.
But if it was a smaller house, then the number might become more realistic.
It's not going to be that much more realistic. I mean, how, how, how small can they make the house? And is that what we're going to, you know, you know, how we're going to look at these things? You know, to have people shrink the houses significantly. It's hard to say, but anyway, those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
So, so I don't know what the outcome of this one's going to be yet, so.
Is there anybody here from the public?
Well, why don't we find out? Is there anyone from the public who, who is waiting to be heard in connection with the application of Flying Point Sands LLC or eleven thirty-one Flying Point Road in Watermill? You are waiting to be heard, this is a good time to let us know by raising your hand.
I see no hands. I see no people.
No hands, okay.
Okay. That motion, we closed the public hearing, leaving it open for written submissions until January seventh with a determination on the January twenty-first date.
Do we have a second?
Second, second.
Okay, Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Tuttill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Ms. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Han.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you for being here. Have a great holiday.
You too, happy holidays.
Zoning Board, good evening.
Good to see you. Bye-bye.
Okay. I think we're on to decisions.
I have a determination in the matter of Edward Sizlinski. The applicant is for a property located at forty-six Sherwood Road in Hampton Bays. Applicant seeks variance as to legalize an accessory apartment constructed within the basement of the dwelling. While this board does not condone construction done without the benefit of a building permit, this application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code to legalize an accessory apartment constructed within the basement of the dwelling without the benefit of a building permit. One, Town Code three thirty eleven point two F accessory apartment special standards to allow the accessory apartment to remain on a lot that is less than thirty thousand square feet. Two, Town Code three thirty eleven two G one to allow the size of the accessory apartment to be forty percent of the floor area of the principal dwelling where a maximum of thirty-five percent is permitted. This relief is granted for structures as shown on the plans prepared by Jeffrey Sands Architect dated January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. And the survey prepared by John T. Metzinger of Iconic Surveyors PC dated August thirty-first of two thousand and four, last revised November sixteenth of two thousand and twenty. The decision is also subject to other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including but not limited to an accessory apartment application form. Is there a second?
Second.
Brandon, if you can do the votes, it's on my recuse on this one.
Yes. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Han.
Aye.
Mr. Tuttle.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and Mr. Grossman recuses himself.
Okay, I actually have a note that before we continue with the decisions, we have a request from the Suffolk County Planning Commission to extend their time to respond to a referral that was made to the application of River Rock Structured Capital LLC due to COVID nine, COVID staffing constraints until January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. So the, so to the extent that it's necessary, I make a motion that we extend the time period for the planning commission to respond to the referral report that be extended to June of two thousand and twenty-one.
To what's that?
We're extending the timeframe for the referral report from the Suffolk County Planning Commission to January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. That's where.
January sixth, okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I wasn't.
And that's okay, because they need extra time.
Understood.
Okay, do we have?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Han.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Tuttill.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa.
Recuse myself on this application.
Okay, chair votes aye. And now on to the rest of the decisions that I have. Okay, which also I have one that I wrote. Okay. All right, I'll do the one I wrote first. This is a decision in the matter of the application of Lisa Pirrellini for seventeen B Sunny Hill Road in Southampton. Following variances, relief for accessory side yard setback, twenty-three point eight feet where eighty feet is required for proposed pool and relief to allow the proposed pool from three thirty seventy sixty and three thirty eighty-three C to allow the proposed pool to be located within the required side yard and total side yard of the principal building. And relief from three thirty eleven Residence District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for accessory side yard setback, relief of forty-four point eight feet where fifty feet is required for an asphalt deck and relief to from three thirty seventy-six C and three thirty eighty-three D to allow the asphalt deck to remain within the required side yard and total side yard of the principal building. And relief from three thirty eleven Residential District's Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal minimum side yard setback of forty-six point six feet where fifty feet is required for the proposed residence and any other relief necessary. This property is two hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-five square feet in the CR two hundred zoning district located at seventeen B Sunny Hill Road in Southampton. Tax number nine hundred forty-five two fifty eight point three. The lot has a two-story, one-family dwelling, garage, porch and deck, seals for the structures. However, apparently the deck was expanded. It is type two pursuant to secret. The lot is changed after the size. At the public hearing testimony by Kevin Springer, he said the applicant was that the applicant is requesting variance relief for a proposed pool and asphalt deck that was expanded without the benefit of a building permit by the applicant and for the asphalt residence. The relief for the pool, which includes side yard setback relief and relief placed the pool in a side total, a required side yard and total side yard is necessary due to the fact that the topography limits where the pool can be placed on the property. In addition, the location will allow the pool to be visible from the residence. The relief for the deck is because it was expanded by the applicant who apparently didn't understand that approvals were required for extending the deck, including variance from this board. The relief for the residence was solely having to do with the measurement on the original survey when the residence was built, which was after a prior variance was granted. Or actually, the house was built after a prior variance was granted previously, which had a measurement. the house was built after prior variance was granted previously, which had a measurement of forty-seven point one feet, whereas the current survey says forty-six point six. There was no opposition to the application. The application passes the five-part test, even though it particularly the asphalt deck and arguably the house, you know, were self-created hardships. Therefore, this board grants relief from three thirty eleven Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory side yard setback of twenty-three point eight feet where fifty feet is required for a proposed pool, relief from three thirty seventy-six D and three thirty eighty-three C to allow the proposed pool to be located within the required side yard and total side yard of the principal building, all for the pool. And relief from three thirty eleven Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory side yard setback of forty-four point eight feet where fifty feet is required and for an asphalt deck from three thirty eight seventy-six D and three thirty eighty-three C to allow the asphalt deck to remain within the required side yard and total side yard of the principal building, all for the asphalt deck. And relief for from three thirty eleven Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal minimum side yard setback of forty-six point six feet where fifty feet is required for the proposed residence, the proposed pool, asphalt deck and asphalt residence from how the dimensional requirements of location as shown on the survey of Twin Forks Land Surveying by Jeffrey Hatterer Surveyor dated April fourth, twenty fifteen, last revised September eleventh, twenty twenty, which was submitted with the application is incorporated herein and any other relief the applicant requires for the proposed structures and asphalt structures on the property.
Second.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Han.
Aye.
Mr. Tuttel.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Hey.
Mrs. Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, I have a decision in the matter of the application of Angela Jett for tax property located tax number nine hundred thirty-one two thirty-one. This applicant is a property located at thirty-eight Lake Drive in North Sea. Applicant requests variances to construct a detached garage. The this application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants applicant relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for proposed detached garage. Three thirty eleven Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for accessory distance from street setback of thirty-three point five feet where fifty feet is required. Relief from three thirty seventy-six D placement of accessory building structures and uses in residence districts for rear yard lot coverage of thirty, I'm sorry, of twenty-three point four percent where a maximum of twenty percent is permitted. And three thirty eight eighty-four D pyramid height for encroachments in the amount of nine hundred and nine cubic feet, five hundred and thirty-four cubic feet on the west, three hundred and seventy-five cubic feet on the south. For structures as shown on the survey prepared by John Ehlers Surveyor, surveyed May fourteenth, two thousand and one, last revised September twenty-second, twenty twenty, and the plans appeared by Eric Eugene Peterson, R.A., issued April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, and elevations issued April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, last revised September twenty-second, twenty twenty. This decision is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired and may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises. Second. Mr. Han.
Aye.
Chair Tuttel.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, I have a determination in the matter of the application of REO Properties LLC for tax number nine hundred three fifty-four four fifty-one. This application is for property located at eighteen Seagate Avenue in West Hampton. Applicant seeks a single and separate determination as and also for variances for the construction of a two-story dwelling. The application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board finds that the subject premises located at eighteen Seagate Avenue, West Hampton, tax number nine hundred three fifty-four four fifty-one, is a single and separate nine thousand nine hundred and forty-five square foot lot and is thus entitled to relief pursuant to Town Code three thirty one fifteen D. Additionally, this board grants relief from Town Code three thirty eleven Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback of thirty feet where forty feet is required from the rest westernly property line Seagate Avenue and a principal front yard setback of thirty feet where forty feet is required from the southernly property line Glendale Street for a proposed two-story dwelling with a covered porch. For structures as shown on the survey prepared by Kenneth Boychuk, man surveying, dated July twenty-third, twenty twenty, last revised September thirtieth, twenty twenty. And the plans appeared by Victor Corneo, architect, dated October sixth, twenty twenty. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired and may otherwise have to require for final approval of the subject premises. Second. Mr. Han.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Tuttel.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mrs. Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Next, I have a determination in the matter of the application of Gregory O'Halloran and Marlene O'Halloran. This is for property located at tax number nine hundred fifteen two forty-three. This application is for property located at seventeen Wicketuck Tribe, North Sea. Applicants request relief to legalize the shower and AC unit as well as for a proposed pyramid encroachment in connection with a one-story addition to a pre-existing dwelling. While this board does not condone construction done without the benefit of a building permit, this application nevertheless passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants applicant relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for proposed one-story addition to the east side of the existing dwelling on a non-conforming lot. Three thirty eighty-four D pyramid height for encroachment in the amount of one thousand two hundred and twelve point two cubic feet, six hundred and eighty-three point six cubic feet existing, plus five hundred and twenty-eight point six cubic feet proposed and six point one cubic feet for a covered porch to legalize an outdoor shower conducted without, constructed without the benefit of a building permit. Relief from three thirty eleven Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for an accessory side yard setback at six point nine feet where eight feet is required and three thirty seventy-six D placement of accessory buildings, structures and uses in all districts and three thirty eighty-three C yards to allow the outdoor shower to remain within the total side yard of the principal building. And three, three thirty seventy-seven G placement of accessory building structures and uses in residence districts to legalize the location of the air conditioning unit to it at a side yard setback of three point two feet where ten feet is required. These variances are granted for structures shown on the survey prepared by Jeffrey Hatterer of Twin Forks Land Surveying dated November first, two thousand and eighteen, last revised October sixteen, twenty twenty. And the plans repaired by Jason Paramba of Jason Thomas Architect last of Jason Thomas Architect last revised July ninth, twenty twenty. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to require acquire for final approval of the subject premises. Second. Mr. Han.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Tuttel.
Aye.
Mrs. Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Two left. Next, I have a decision in the matter of the application of James Delay for property located at tax number nine hundred one eighty-seven two twenty-three. This applicant application is a property located at twenty-nine Washington Heights Avenue, Hampton Bay. Applicant seeks to construct in addition to an existing dwelling. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of Town Code three thirty eleven Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations for a proposed addition and stairway to the existing dwelling. One, a principal minimum side yard setback of fourteen feet six inches where twenty feet is required for the proposed addition. Two, a principal minimum side yard setback of eleven feet one inch where twenty feet is required for the proposed stairway. Three, a principal total side yard setback of thirty-nine feet six inches where forty-five feet is required for the proposed addition. And four, a principal total side yard setback of thirty-four feet eleven inches where forty feet is required for the proposed stairway. All for structures as shown on the site plan and plans prepared by architect Mark A. Seirich, last revised October fourteenth, twenty twenty. This decision is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired and may otherwise have to acquire final approval of the subject premises. Second. Mr. Han.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Tuttel.
Aye.
Mrs. Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Last one. I have a decision in the matter of the application of Joseph Sitrone, the property located at Suffolk County Tax Number nine hundred two ninety-seven three forty-nine. This application is for property located at thirty-nine Wakeman Road, Hampton Bay. Applicant requests relief for additions and renovations to an existing one-story dwelling. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief to the applicant from the following provisions of the Town Code for various additions and renovations to a dwelling under construction. One, for a front porch, Town Code three thirty one fifteen C continuance for a principal front yard setback of twenty-eight point five feet where twenty-nine feet is existing. Two, for rear porch, Town Code three thirty one fifteen C for a principal minimum side yard setback of seven point one feet or seven point three feet is existing and a principal total side yard setback of twenty-one point five feet where twenty-one point seven feet is existing. And three, for a roof renovation, relief from Town Code three thirty eighty-four D pyramid height for encroachment in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-five point sixty-three cubic feet, one thousand six hundred and fifty cubic feet proposed north side and one fifteen point six three cubic feet proposed on the south side. These variances are granted for structures as shown on the survey prepared by Floyd Carrington of Carrington Rayner Marks and Carrington dated March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, and the plans repaired by Vincent John Musorelli revised February eleventh, twenty twenty, and received by this board November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty. The grant of the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to require for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Aye.
Mr. Han.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye, and I have one decision after that one.
Okay, Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mrs. Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Decision in the matter of application of Joseph J. Hancock, twenty-two Squire Town Road, Hampton Bay, New York, tax number nine hundred two twenty-six two, lot ten point two. Are we the relief at the end? This is the one where the gentleman had the garage two point three feet from the lot line pre-existing. He's moving it further from the lot line, connecting to the house. It's going to be eight point seven one feet from the lot line when all is said and done, meets the five-part test. Therefore, in the interest of justice and for the reasons set forth herein, this board grants applicant relief from Town Code for the proposed dwelling with attached garage, three thirty dash eighty-four D pyramid height for proposed encroachment in the amount of one thousand five hundred and eighteen point five cubic feet, three thirty dash eleven Residential District Table of Dimensional Regulations, a minimum side yard setback of eight point seven one feet where twenty feet is required and a total side yard setback of thirty-two point oh four feet where sixty feet is required as shown on architectural renderings made by C Lou Architect dated September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, as well as survey made by Young &amp; Young Surveyors, last dated September twenty-second, twenty twenty, which show all proposed improvements. Granted, the foregoing relief is conditional upon the applicant obtaining all other necessary permits or approvals by the town and Southampton Building Department.
Second. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Han.
Aye.
Mr. Tuttel.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mrs. Sessa. Chair votes aye. Motion to close.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.